Welcome to the City Commission Meeting of January 28, 2025. Glad to see a big crowd. We must be talking about something significant today, so we'll find out. We're going to start off with the Reverend Heath Taus. He's a senior pastor at First Presbyterian. He's going to come up and lead the invocation. And then Kurt Hartog with the Bay County Builders is going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all please stand.
Yeah, let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just am so thankful for your kindness to us and your care and your provision, how you love Panama City and you've preserved us and you sustained us not only through ups and downs, Lord, but through category five hurricanes and as of last week, a snowstorm, which I'm sure none of us ever thought we would experience in our lifetimes. Even that was a gift, Lord. That was a chance to slow down and to enjoy the beauty all around us. And so we thank you for that, Lord. As we get back to business here today, I do ask that you would bless our time together. Would you give these men and women wisdom? Would you give them understanding? And would everything we say and do today, Lord, be pleasing to you and ultimately good for the people of Panama City, Florida, Lord? We do pray this in the name of Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Smith, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Rowan.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Granger.
Present.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Mayor Yevorn.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You all have had a chance to look at the minutes from the meeting of January 14th. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve of those minutes? Or do we need to look into them and see if there's errors?
I think we're good. You scared me when you said it like that. Especially read them before we get here.
Motion approved.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we got a motion in a second. Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Rowan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications of today's agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, staff would like to take item 6C, which is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 3256, transportation impact fees, and allow the commission to remove it from today's agenda. Staff would like to take it and have a workshop with some of the local community and bring it back no later than the second meeting in March. The question we have is if the committee, sorry, commission, rather, would be okay with staff leading that workshop with interested parties in the community, or if you guys would like to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to move 6B to a workshop and let the staff be the organizing part of that workshop? Or we could change it if somebody doesn't like that.
If you all want to join us, we'd love to have you.
I'll motion to have the workshop with industry professionals and table this until the second meeting in March.
I'll second.
Very good.
Clarifying, workshop with staff, though? Or with?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I would like to just make a, I would like to say something. For all of you that showed up, thank you. For all of you that sent emails, thank you. And the way you sent the emails was so polite. A lot of times we just get things and they're just like mad and they don't know the whole story and they don't. And just being able to be open to say, hey, just give us some time. Let's all work together, see what we can do, was just the easiest yes ever. So I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate and respect the emails that you sent.
Who are you talking to?
The builders.
I just wanted to make sure.
Builders, the engineers, everybody.
Are those the builders out there?
It's the nicest email campaign I've ever received, so thank you.
It really was.
It was, yeah.
Hallelujah.
All right, Ms. Smith, can you call the roll on that motion?
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Rowan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
No more changes from staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, commissioners, any changes, deletions, omissions? Is that something, we okay?
Yes.
Very good. All right, we're going to move on to the 5A on your agenda, the retirement of Teresa Miller. So Ms. Miller, can you come forward?
Oh.
Hey, chief, how you?
I did.
Ms. Miller, you must do a good job. Am I on?
You're on.
It's on? Okay, good. Yeah, you got a lot of friends. You have to have done a great job. Okay, she, Ms. Miller is retiring after 20 years of service with Panama City. She's retired from her active service now. She began her career with the city June 8, 2004, serving as a police officer with the Panama City Police Department, where she spent the first 10 years of her career. During this time, she advanced to the level of Police Officer III. Teresa talks often of her time with the police department and her former partners. There have been many laughs about the crazy things that can happen when helping people find their way home after late nights, and serious conversations about the situation that all of our officers find themselves in on a daily basis. As Teresa talks about her time with this team, it inevitably leads with a laugh or a smile, and we are better because she spent time with our police department. Teresa's knowledge, experience, report-writing skills, organization, and sense of humor that she developed and utilized while she was with the police department allowed her to transition to the Human Resources Team as the contracts, grants, and fleet manager. In this role, Teresa managed the liability, fleet and equipment insurance, and risk mitigation within the HR team. Teresa's thirst for knowledge and dedication led to her accomplishing certification from the Society of Human Resources Management as a certified professional. She became the Workers' Compensation Risk Manager in 2019, where she served until her retirement. Her knowledge of risk management led her to effectively manage all of the city's workers' compensation accidents and risks while assisting our team members in understanding the process of workers' compensation insurance, and that's difficult. Teresa was conscientious, organized, and diligent in assisting her fellow team members and has shown this in her career with the city. Thank you, Teresa, for spending the past two decades, decades of your career here at the city. We wish you well in your retirement and hope you enjoy the relaxation and time with your family.
Thank you.
In honor of your retirement, 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Panama City, Florida, may you look back on your years of service and find a sense of accomplishment and pride. Thank you for your service, time, and investment in the future of our community. May you enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
Job, Jared? Sit down to Jared. Jared. That's why.
Well, thank you, Teresa. We're going to miss you, I'm sure, especially somebody that is very knowledgeable about workers' compensation, which is forever changing and always difficult. We're moving now to the City of Panama City Community Announcements. The City of Panama City has community announcements and wants you to stay informed and engaged with the latest happenings in our city. We encourage you to participate in our diverse range of events, programs, and meetings. These are designed to foster a dynamic and connected community. For more details and updates, please visit our website at www.panamacity.gov, and you can also follow the City of Panama City's Facebook page. Gather with us on February 3 at 4:00 p.m. in the City Hall Rotunda for a special celebration of Panama City's Black Heritage. This event will feature Commissioner Lucas reading of the Black History Month Proclamation, experience soulful performances, hear from a special guest speaker, and enjoy additional surprises that honor the rich cultural contributions of our community. This is a pivotal occasion to come together and recognize the significant impact of Black history here in Panama City. Don't miss this opportunity to connect, reflect, and celebrate with us, and listen to Ms. Lucas. She's going to do a reading. Join us for a series of engaging community meetings with Keith Meford. He's the Director of Parks Culture and Recreation. This is going to be in various locations throughout the city. These meetings are a great opportunity to stay informed about the latest developments in our community. This will include updates on upcoming events, progress in park construction, and the status of grants. The next meeting is Thursday, February 6 at Daphen Park. Doors open at 5:30 p.m., and the meeting begins at 6. The Panama City CRA will host four public meetings during the month of February. These are called CRA socials, which will include the attendance of city staff, CRA board members, and the ward commissioner. These events aim to introduce the CRA staff and the ward commissioner to the community, highlight the department's role and benefits, and gather community feedback on future projects. These meetings, after introducing and explaining the department operations, attendees will then be divided into groups and given maps, budgets, and guidelines on how they would allocate funds for community projects. The first meeting is the Downtown North District on Thursday, February 6 at the Glenwood Community Center. This begins at 5:30 p.m., and the full schedule of all four events can be found at our city website. Please join us February 12 at 1:00 p.m. at the City Hall Rotunda for the Labor of Love Through Music event, a special celebration of Black History Month. This unique music showcase features talented local artists who will provide soul-stirring solo performances. Experience the powerful expressions of our cultural heritage through music, impactful spoken word, and the expressive voices of our community. Don't miss this opportunity to connect with history and culture through the universal language of music. Panama City is setting its sights on revitalizing its Little League program, and we need your support. With a rich history of success, including past championship contenders, and the chance to compete on the world stage, this is the perfect time for young athletes to join our Little League family and continue the tradition of excellence. The road to Williamsport, Pennsylvania, the home of the Little League World Series, begins right here in Panama City, and we're ready to take the first step. Let us make history together. You can register online at panamastadysports.com. It's worth also noting that in 2024, Lake Mary, Florida, this Lake Mary, Florida, won the World Championship Little League Series. So quite an honor for our state, and maybe we can bring another one home here.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I do have another addition, if you don't mind, sir.
Addition to the community events?
Yep. My apologies, Mr. Mayor. I meant to add item 11C, which would be ratification of the declaration of emergency and the extension for the local state of emergency due to winter storm Enzo. That would be item 11C under the City Manager section.
Okay. Is there a motion to let Jonathan button line and add a piece to the agenda?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Smith, call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Rowan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we're now moving to the public hearings and...
Yep. That's me, sir. Item 6A is consideration for the second reading of ordinance 3258, which approves increasing the Panama City Police Department Pension Funds Annual Cost of Living Adjustment, or COLA, for future retirees from 2% to 3%. As background information, current retirees of the Panama City Police Department Pension Fund receive a 2% COLA. This change would allow future retirees and anyone retiring on or after September 1 of 2023 to receive a 3% COLA each year. This change is a benefit to existing officers, which we hope will increase retention rates as well as increase recruiting opportunities for new employees. The Pension Board collaborated with city management, and we're able to factor the increase into the existing pension benefit payroll payments, so this cost is currently funded in the existing budget. The cost of the increase is $135,452 per year. After 15 years, the cost reduces to only $47,086 per year. Staff recommends approval and first reading, sorry, I believe this is the final reading, of ordinance 3258.
All right, well, thank you. Would anyone here like to make a motion to approve of the agenda item?
I will move a motion to approve.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm...
Before we vote, we'd need to invite the public.
You got, I got it. Okay. That's a technicality. Before we vote on it, we have to ask the public if they would like to come up and make a comment about this. So we're increasing the police retirement from 2% to 3%. Anybody in the public wish to speak? All right, moving on. Anybody up here like to make a motion to approve of 6A, which is ordinance?
We have a motion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Rowan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved ordinance number 3258, an ordinance of the City of Panama City amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Employee Benefits, Division 5, Municipal Police Officers Pension Trust Fund of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Panama City, amending Section 2-450, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending subsection F, Cost of Living Adjustments Providing for Severability, repealing ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date.
Item 6B is the second reading of ordinance 3259, an ordinance approving, adopting, and establishing the Panama City Tax Increment Rebate Program under the City of Panama City Community Redevelopment Agency. As background information, the City of Panama City Community Redevelopment Agency, or CRA, considered and developed a Tax Increment Rebate Program, or TIF, program as a redevelopment incentive found in Florida statutes, Chapter 163, Section 163.387b1.b. This TIF program was approved by the CRA as a tax increment rebate program at the properly noticed and advertised public hearing on April 16, 2024, and further revised at the properly noticed and advertised public hearing on November 19 of 2024. Ordinance 3259 will approve and establish the TIF program for the City of Panama City, which was developed and approved by the CRA. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 3259 to establish the TIF program for the City of Panama City.
Just as a reminder, commissioners, the guidelines that are attached to the ordinance were approved, again, last night by the, in your role as members of the Community Redevelopment Agency, and you also approved your first grant agreement that is subject to the adoption of this ordinance. You approved that last night as well.
Okay, so this is the ordinance 3256, and it deals with the transportation impact fees. Is that correct?
No, 3259.
59.
The Tax Increment Rebate Program.
We canceled the transportation impact fee, and that will be coming back sometime in March.
We're on 6 Bravo.
Oh, I'm one ahead, sorry. This is a public hearing. Right, this is a public hearing on ordinance 3259. Does any member of the public wish to speak? All right. Would any member of the commission like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3259?
Motion approved.
Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Rowan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3259, an ordinance establishing the Panama City Tax Increment Rebate Program for the City of Panama City, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
All right, item 6C was tabled until not later than the second meeting in March. So moving on to item 6D, which is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 3219, an ordinance amending the City of Panama City's comprehensive plans, future land use element to include the neighborhood planning area district, NPA, future land use category. As background information, in 2020, the city initiated a visioning process for the Glenwood, Millville, and St. Andrews neighborhoods, which resulted in neighborhood plans for each community respectively. To implement the strategic vision of the neighborhood plans, the City Commission amended the Unified Land Development Code and adopted the Neighborhood Zoning Districts in August of 2021. All amendments to the Land Development Code are required to be consistent with the local comprehensive plan per Section 163.3194, Subpart 1B of the Florida statutes. An amendment to the comprehensive plan is required to create and establish the Neighborhood Planning Area District Future Land Use Category. The zoning districts would implement the future land use category. Staff recommends the City Commission approve this request. This item was previously reviewed by the Planning Board on May 13 of 2024, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. The City Commission held the first of two public hearings on June 11 of 2024, and the following documents are enclosed. Ordinance 3219, the staff analysis, report, recommendation, and proposed amendment. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services in the City Manager's office is that the City Commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance. Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I just want to recognize Jawan Haley, the Planning Division Manager for the city, along with Amy Graves, the Principal Project Manager with Dover Coal. They are here to give a brief presentation at the beginning of the public hearing and then answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. So just piggybacking off of what Jonathan was stating, so there are several items before you this evening, the reading for the agenda item request for item 6D. Item 6D, 6E, 7A, and 7B all have to do with the neighborhood plans, so we thought it would be prudent to have the presentation before all of the items come forward. Of course, you will have your public hearings for each item, but we want to go ahead and provide you with that, with that presentation. Ms. Amy Groves with Dover Coal and Partners, Principal and Seniority or Project Director, she will be giving that presentation. Of course, I'm available for any questions, and also Mike Burke is also available. We do want to point out, there was an adjustment in item 6E regarding vested rights for properties. So if there's additional questions about that, Mike Burke is available. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy Groves. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and it's great to be with you all here tonight. And as the city manager was mentioning, you know, this work comes as a result of the recovery planning work that was started in 2019, and in 2021, there was three new zoning districts that were adopted. And so tonight, what is before you is to then adopt the maps, which would apply that text to the actual parcels in the neighborhood areas. So I remember being with many of you in 2020 with, when we did the neighborhood plans, we had a series of virtual and in-person meetings, and you know, lots of community ideas were generated, and you know, we worked to, you know, locate those specific ideas on the plans and, you know, come up with a vision for the neighborhoods. And, you know, the report is full of illustrations like these that show the vision for future development, and, you know, the idea for new walkable development to come in the neighborhood areas, and, you know, really to build upon, you know, the things that are great in the neighborhoods and recognize the existing fabric, but also recognizing opportunities like this one, where there could be new walkable buildings, you know, having buildings pulled up to the street and having the parking to the rear. In St. Andrews, you know, similar illustration here as well. So I'm, you know, going quickly through these just to, you know, kind of refresh everyone's memory of what was in the neighborhood plans. And there was, you know, a series of implementation strategies that were at the end of that report, and, you know, one very important one is to revise the city codes and ordinances as a way to remove barriers to investment and incentivize the type of development that was visualized in the plan. So that took us to, in 2021, the plan was approved, and there was then the text that was included as part of the plan was approved. This map here shows the vision, the neighborhood downtown and general areas are envisioned to be mixed-use, walkable areas surrounded by a neighborhood residential zone, which allows for primarily residential, but a range of residential types. And the text I mentioned, you know, was approved, and so there are these three districts, neighborhood downtown, neighborhood general, neighborhood residential. And in the text, there's requirements for building form and placement and parking and permitted uses all described. But there's really five main things that this zoning is trying to achieve, and so I'm going to walk through those. One is replacing the general commercial zoning on the neighborhood corridors. So, you know, the general commercial is, you know, it doesn't allow residential uses, and it has deep front setbacks. And so that's, you know, in conflict with the vision for a mix of uses and walkability. So we wanted to address that. I think it's particularly important in Glenwood on the Martin Luther King Boulevard corridor, where in 2002, there was a road widening that improved traffic flow, but resulted in a lack of walkability and shallower parcels, where those deep setbacks really make it difficult. So this zoning is a step towards trying to alleviate that concern. You know, but really looking at the existing zoning in our analysis, you know, a lot of the front setbacks and the lot sizes, they're not consistent with the buildings that are out there in the neighborhoods today. So really wanting to adjust the zoning, adjust those setbacks so that new buildings can come and be consistent with, you know, what was historically in the neighborhood centers. We also adjusted the parking, specifically in the downtown and general areas, to reduce the minimum onsite requirements. Again, this is really a barrier to smaller lots and walkable areas, where you want to try to bring people closer together, and large parking areas can push them further apart. So the parking will be more based on what is the market demand for parking. We also incentivize and try to encourage a mix of what we call missing middle housing. So this is the duplexes, the triplexes, all of these smaller types that, you know, fit in well with a single-family residential area, but allows for more diverse building types to be included throughout the neighborhoods. And then, you know, we include standards for walkability. And what does that mean? On the left here, you can see buildings that have, you know, doors and windows that face out towards the sidewalk and, you know, common building elements, like an expression line at the first level that sets the pedestrian scale for those buildings. On the right side, you know, there's that building at the top right is in the right place, but it has no doors and windows. And on the bottom picture, the buildings are, even though there's a sidewalk there, buildings are set further back, so it's really not very walkable. So where the code has requirements for the downtown and general areas, those corridors to have a minimum fenestration, and, you know, some of these just really basic building standards to produce more walkable building orientation. So that brings us to where we are today, and the effort to then adopt the zoning maps, which would apply these districts to each of the parcels. And so we started in early 2024, and here's a timeline. As the city commissioner mentioned, there was the first reading held in June, and then over the summer, our team had a series of stakeholder and community meetings in order to get feedback. And then since then, we've been working closely with staff to revise the maps, and then we're here tonight for the second reading. Here are some photos of those sessions. We had the community-wide meeting at City Hall on July 15, and then three in-person workshops in each of the neighborhoods over August 5 and August 6. And we got a variety of feedback, and we've been updating the maps then based on that feedback. In your packet tonight, there's called Appendix B, and it contains all of the comments, and you can see side-by-side comparisons of the draft maps and the changes that have been made. This is the changes made to the Glenwood neighborhood, and then changes made in St. Andrews as well. So I'm happy to address any questions you have about those specific changes, but generally they were changes that were, you know, adjusting to meet the surrounding context and have similar building space across the street from each other. Some of the feedback that we got was not about maps, but things that were in the zoning text. So as Juwan mentioned, there's a separate provision to update, just a few key provisions in the adopted text. I think the thing that we heard most about were the... I think the thing that we heard most about were the neighborhood corner stores in the neighborhood residential. This would allow some small amount of, you know, limited commercial in the, on corners in neighborhood corner stores. And so the, the changes now would require a conditional use permit. So again, additional level of scrutiny on those, and then just more detail about exactly what's permitted and prohibited, and limits on the hours of operation signage and parking. And so those are all shown as track changes edits in this proposed ordinance for your consideration. The other changes are excluding existing buildings from maximum footprint requirements, and then adding provisions. As Juwan mentioned, there's described a special acceptance certificate, which would allow for use of the existing today zoning standards within specified time periods. So again, the, the maps are included within the agenda. These are the updated versions of the maps that are included for your consideration.
I saw something in there on St. Andrews, and it had 100, they were talking about building height, and it had 100, and then over on the side, it had 40 with an asterisk. What did that mean?
I'm not sure exactly what that, where that, that was. There is, and the height in St. Andrews, the proposed height for the neighborhood downtown area is four and a half stories.
So that's where the 40 came from?
Possibly. The, the, it's not exactly 40, that you, there's provisions, it's four and a half stories, and so it, I'm not sure. Do you know what the 40, what page that's on? I'm, I'm not sure of that exact comment.
Okay, it was on one of your slides about 10 slides earlier. There you go. You just passed it.
Oh, I passed it?
There you go, right there. Downtown, we got 100, and then we got 40 max height, St. Andrews, Millville, Glenwood.
So that's the existing zoning, that's actually the zoning that applies today.
The 100 and the 40?
Yes, and so the, you can maybe help me with the 40. The, I believe it's 100 feet, but then what is the 40? For the exist, this is the existing St. Andrews downtown district.
Oh, existing St. Andrews. So yes, this chart before you today is just showing all the setback, that, this is what's allowed right now. So the goal of the neighborhood plans is to implement the, the new height and the new setbacks, which be, which would be around the four and a half story mark. So what you're looking at is current, that's what's in place right now.
The 100, like in St. Andrews, hundreds, and then so the idea is to go to 40?
It's not, it's not, it's not 40, it's four and a half stories.
Could be a little more.
Yes, it's, so that's, that's just what we want to communicate, but what you see now is what's, this chart is what's actually allowed right now. So that's the current regulations.
That's where, that's the 100?
Correct, that's what, yeah, what, whatever you see up here right now, that's what's allowable right now.
Juan, what is the 40 in parentheses? What does that, what does that?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that was the question. So if you see the 100, then there's a parentheses with 40 and an asterisk beside it, what is, what is that?
Yeah, I have to.
I thought it was 125 that the current zoning allows, but that was, this may be incorrect.
It may be incorrect, but I think what staff is focusing on is the blue squared areas. That's what they're trying to communicate for this slide, the, the heights on this may be inaccurate, but it's really communicating just the setbacks.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure, I'd have to go back and look, I do, I do see that, I'm not, yes, I'm not quite sure. The only thing that I could think of is when we're talking about major development, so there is a, there is a provision in the code where if you exceed three stories, then you have to go before Planning Board. I'd have to go back, like, like Amy was saying, and really try to figure out what exactly that means, but I'm, I'm thinking that's probably it. So once you go above three stories, if you were, like, let's say somebody's trying to build an apartment complex, or hotel, or anything like that, once you go above three stories, that triggers a major development, and then you have to go before the Planning Board for approval.
Juwan, is it the 40, or the 40 in these zonings or 150, whatever it is that's in the parentheses, that's what would require a, a additional measure of going to the Planning Board?
That's what I believe, yes.
Because it's a, of a grid.
Yeah, so, so you, so it's, our, it's, and, and it's interesting, because in most codes, you, you have just a maximum height limit, but in our code, you do have a maximum height limit, but there is that provision, this is if you go above the three stories, then you have to go before the Planning Board. So it's kind of like, yes, you, that is your, your max allowed height, however, there is that caveat. So I believe that's why you have that, that asterisk there, but we have to go back.
That makes perfect sense of what that is, as part of it is.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can think of, so.
There's a lot of numbers, I appreciate that.
Regardless, this is going away.
That is our, yes, that's our focus. Yeah, that's.
The analysis of the existing zoning, and, and as you mentioned, pointing out the, specifically the ones highlighted in blue that we found were really just, you know, inconsistent with what, first of all, what's built today, and then, you know, the vision that's illustrated in the drawings of the setbacks and such, and so that's what, one of the key things that we're hoping to address with the new zoning.
All right, well, thank you. You said something about in blue, what's in blue? Is that another, the blue square?
Right.
Oh, okay, it's not blue letter, blue numbers, it's blue, in the blue. Okay, I understand. All right.
It's been a long road, Amy. Yes, met in 2019, starting all this planning and community meetings, and you guys have really been rock stars, and even your planning for downtown, I know when you visit here, you have to be like, wow, you know, the changes and the people, and I really appreciate all the work y'all put into it.
Yes, all right, thank you. This is a public meeting, does any member of the public wish to speak about this? All right, would anybody up here like to make a motion to approve 3219?
It would be my honor to have a motion to approve.
I would love to second it.
Any discussion? Sounds like we ought to have a third, shouldn't we? Everybody wants to jump on this.
Everybody gets their shot, though, next.
All right, Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
The commission has adopted ordinance 3219, an ordinance of the City of Panama City amending the comprehensive plan, amending the future land use element to include the neighborhood planning area district, future land use category, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing the ordinance shall take effect as provided by law.
Item 6E is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 3220, an ordinance amending chapters 104 and 105 of the Panama City Unified Land Development Code concerning the Neighborhood Zoning Districts. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet and was just provided by Ms. Haley and Ms. Groves. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services and the City Manager's Office is that the city commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance.
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second.
Well, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak on 6E, ordinance 3220? Okay. Anybody up here want to make a motion? I think somebody does.
You have a motion in a second?
All right. Is this the one, let's see, what do we do here? Does this limit heights? What we're doing, does this limit heights in buildings? Jonathan, what you think?
Defer to the Assistant City Attorney.
Yeah, this, this particular section is amending parts of the, of the code that are existing. Ms. Groves talked about it with the, the changes to the corner stores, and this provides the special exception certificate, the language that limited the heights y'all had adopted in 2019. So today, you're just adopting the maps that actually, that, with the exception of this ordinance, that apply all of that height limits and those things to those areas going forward.
So this is not heights?
This is not heights, you did that three years ago.
Okay.
This, this has a couple of changes that we had based on some, the charrettes that people got concerned about, the corner store issue, and then we had the special, the special exception certificate that's included.
So just to clarify, though, because that seems like, why did we have that big old meeting the other day? So we adopted that we were going to apply the heights, but we had not made the map of the parcels of where that would apply. So that's what, not this particular item, but coming up, that's what we're doing.
Correct.
So if we pass this ordinance and we limit thing, limit corners and things of that nature, limit what can be built on corners, and somebody wants to change it later on, can they come back and ask for an exception? So, okay, so this, this is kind of a, a guide that, that we want?
Correct.
I see, okay, all right, well, thank you.
I think the important thing to point out is you always have to have elected leadership that are willing to hold the line on what you want inside of your community, regardless of what the zoning says. And so, but this is communicating clearly what's desired by the community, and I think that's a great reflection.
But if the community changed their mind, and they came to a commission, and they wanted to modify things, then it could still be done.
I would doubt the community would change, but, but it's possible, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Anybody else want to make, talk about 3220? Anybody, member of the public? All right. Do we have a motion up here to approve 32?
Yes, in a second.
We have one, all right. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved ordinance 3220, an ordinance of the City Commission of Panama City amending sections 104-36 and 105-4 of the Unified Land Development Code concerning the Neighborhood Zoning Districts, repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, codification, and an effective date.
All right, we're moving on to the quasi-judicial hearings, and Ms. McWayne?
Thank you. During quasi-judicial proceedings, the commission will hear evidence and render a decision regarding the matter presented based upon the evidence received. The parties before the commission and the public are entitled to present evidence and cross-examine witnesses. All parties and witnesses will be under oath in the entire proceedings recorded. The commission is not bound by the strict rules of evidence and may consider any evidence which it deems relevant and trustworthy. Any member of the commission may ask questions of the parties or the witnesses. Since quasi-judicial proceedings are legal in nature, everyone is expected to adhere to proper courtroom decorum and etiquette. Any comments or objections should be directed to the mayor. The burden of proof in a quasi-judicial proceeding rests with the applicant, therefore, the applicant has the opportunity to address the commission last, after all public participation, and before the commission deliberates. At this time for items 7A through 7B, I will swear on staff who will remain under oath during the entire proceedings. I will swear on additional parties that intend to testify during the public hearing after the city manager introduces each item. The only staff? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I will ask the commission to disclose ex parte communication, which is communication received outside of this public hearing after the city manager introduces each application. Normally, we do that, but there's only 7A and 7B, so I will ask at this time if you'll disclose any ex parte communication.
How do we do that when we've got multiple years and hundreds of conversations?
That's all you have to do. You spoke to multiple people over the years about these items. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At the close of the evidence and during the deliberation by the commission, members of the public are prohibited from commenting. Thank you.
Item 7A is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 3223.1, an ordinance amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of neighborhood planning area district for properties located within the Glenwood, Millville, and St. Andrews Neighborhood Plan Study Areas. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet, following the briefing as well by Ms. Haley and Ms. Groves. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services and the City Manager's Office is that the city commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance.
All right, there's a public hearing on ordinance 3223.1. Does anyone wish to speak about that ordinance? All right, would any member of the commission like to make a motion?
Me, 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 me. I'd like to move a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let me do it.
Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3223.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of neighborhood planning area district within the defined boundaries of the Glenwood, Millville, and St. Andrews Neighborhood Plan Study Areas, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item 7B is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 3223.2, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city to reflect the zoning designations of neighborhood downtown, neighborhood general, and neighborhood residential for properties located within the Glenwood, Millville, and St. Andrews Neighborhood Plans Study Areas. Relevant background, background information is enclosed in your packet and was also provided in the brief presentation by Ms. Haley and Ms. Groves. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services and the City Manager's Office is that the city commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance.
All right, this is a public hearing on ordinance 3223.2. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this ordinance? All right, would any member of the commission like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3223.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of land at neighborhood general, neighborhood residential, neighborhood downtown, within the defined boundaries of the Glenwood, Millville, St. Andrews Neighborhood Plan Study Areas, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 2,200 acres, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you, we're now moving to audience participation.
They were excited about audience participation.
I think somebody wants to talk. Audience participation, you can come to the.
While everybody's doing, I do think it's important to realize, like, this achievement was the residents that live in these districts showing up to meetings, advocating for multiple years, most things like this fall apart. And, you know, so kudos to all of you for your work.
Thank you. Audience participation, you can come to the microphone, you have, can speak for three minutes, give us your name and address, and then afterwards, after everybody's through, we'll try to come back and go through the comments.
Good evening, again. I spoke to you last night, but apparently I was in the wrong meeting.
Yes, sir, you were.
My concerns are.
Name and address, please.
Emmanuel Hill, 508 East 9th Street. My concerns basically are, is about the infrastructure in the Glenwood area in particular. As I said, I came back from England in 2006, and since then, I've not seen any roadwork, significant roadwork done in that neighborhood. And I live on 9th Street, which is just outside of the transportation depot. So there's a, a heavy load of traffic, particularly on that street. I was informed earlier that the, well, when, when I, when I get water out of my faucet, it looks like I live in Flint, Michigan. I'd like to know who I see about testing that water. I don't drink it without boiling it first, but I'm concerned that it's not safe to consume. And, and I'd like to know who, who I would address that to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. After we finish the comments, we'll come back and, and try to answer you, so hang around.
Hi, Patty Sunday, 11:15. I was a little bit late because I overslept. Did you take the item off of the new fees and stuff for developers?
Yes.
Okay, because one of my comments was going to just remind you if you could consider for a first-time home buyers maybe waiving that $1,000 fee, so I guess I'm ahead. I wanted to say hi to Amy. Congratulations, congratulations, Planning Department. I downloaded that last night, and it's, I, I thought about it, that's three PhDs worth of work when you, when you look at all the papers, and I wanted to congratulate this commission. I was actually here on a business trip at the very first meeting, and I was bored, so I came to the very first charrette. I have a picture of myself and Mayor Ametrious Gregg, who of course, I went up and introduced myself to. So just a lot of work. So just a lot of work. Amy, I learned so much from y'all, just mountains and mountains of work. I brag about the fact that we have Dover coal when I see other people and when I'm other places that you guys have adopted this. I just think it's fabulous. Our children live respectively in Austin, Chicago, Pittsburgh, and Tallahassee, where some of your work is from. And when we visit them, we really feel this, we see this. It's walkable. We go have coffee, we can get groceries. We live it when we go visit our children. The other thing on the agenda is about the city manager's paying thresholds. And I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to call you out. I just haven't been feeling well. So I get that if it's about watching the spending, but I would like y'all to ask the question, if you want the city manager to cut $2 million, or $10 million, or $5 million, or show whatever that looks like, that's the big ask. I like the incremental stuff. I remember when Sean Self did that wonderful chart. It was very illuminating. But if, if, indeed, and I would have called and asked, you apologize, then just say it. Say, hey, what does it look like to cut $2 million? What does it look like to cut $5 million? Show us. Or maybe that's going to be at that workshop, the idea that you had coming up, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi, Kurt Hartshog, 223 Forest Park Circle. I'm the president of the Bay County or the Bay Building Industries Association. I just want to thank the Commission for tabling the possible impact or transportation impact fee. And we look forward to the workshop and love to be a participant in that, and hopefully we can come to a good decision. We do realize that transportation fees or impact needs to be addressed. We need to allow for the new roads and such for the new developments, so we'd love to be part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dolores King, 2538 West Ninth Street in St. Andrews. I would just like to ask a question and make a proposal that you would consider the city of Panama City, every ward... We're a small city. And, you know, every ward, every election, every commissioner, whatever happens in Ward 1 affects Ward 2 and vice versa. And the fact that we can only vote for a commissioner that's in our ward, I think, is detrimental to the city. I mean, I know there's upcoming elections, and it's like, well, there's people that I would... You know, whoever gets Ward 1, I live in Ward 4, you know? I mean, we're neck to neck. And I would just like to see if it is possible to look into citywide voting, because then the residents can... We can be, you know, a more unified community. Thank you.
Like the county. The county does it that way.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
We're still in audience participation. Anybody in the audience wish to speak?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Brenda.
Thank you. No response. You all could at least say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. There's nothing wrong with being polite. You remind me of the man on the Luden's Cough Drop Box, but anyway.
He does sort of look like that.
He does. I'm old enough to know that. You may not be, but I am.
Very distinguished, yes.
I'd have to look it up.
Look it up. The Smith Brothers, the Smith Brothers. At any rate, Brenda Lewis Williams, 1007 North Center Avenue, Panama City, Florida. I have a couple of questions. I, in fact, agree with limiting the city manager's, actually, all department heads' threshold spending during the time that we're in this financial crunch. It speaks to responsibility, financial fiscal responsibility, as opposed to fiscal irresponsibility by doing so. In most organizations, it starts at the top. Cuts start at the top, not at the bottom. On the city manager 11A, why not put this out for bid? Seemingly, there were only two people who requested this. Are there not other organizations within the country, city, who can implement this? But furthermore, this bears explanation for those who are unaware, what's the purpose of doing so, and where will the monies be going, i.e. the general budget, debt relief, and anything else? And I would like to give... Is Clint Murphy... Yeah, he's still here. Thank you. I would like to give Clint Murphy... And what's Allen's last name?
Forbes.
Forbes. I would like to give Clint Murphy and Allen Forbes kudos for what they did at 10th Court on Sunday, and all of the underground utilities folks who came out on Sunday to do that repairs. And Clint did let me know that there were some emergencies going on in other areas of the city, two other areas needed to be addressed. But that one was a biggie. I suppose the others were as well. But nonetheless, it was taken care of. It's not totally completed, but it's on the way. And those gentlemen gave up their Sundays. They gave up Sunday church. They gave up their Sunday... Their meal after Sunday. One gentleman even said he hadn't missed a Sunday church in seven years. So that says a lot to the dedication of those employees in the underground utility department. Also, I made several months ago a comment to the city manager at the pothole on Ninth and Sherman, and it was finally... It's not fixed, it's just patched. So maybe we can get that area taken care of. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Hank.
Hank Pickin, 820 West Beach Drive, here to pick up where we left off last meeting. And that was, we were talking about all of the pretending that was going on. And believe it or not, two years ago, remind a lot of people in this room that two years ago, we were told that the road had been given to the city and that this whole project was going to proceed, that it was a done deal. And Mr. Street will remember that because he was at that meeting, and we were told that the street was a done deal. And we've been pretending now for two years that the path can be built. As a matter of fact, we've now run up about $1 million in spending for the design and legal fees associated with the development of this path, which we may or may not be able to build. I understand it is not Panama City money, but I understand it is taxpayer money. The pretending has cost taxpayers $1 million for a project that may or may not happen. The next thing they're pretending about is caring about public opinion. We've heard that speech on a couple of occasions tonight. We heard it at the last meeting about the St. Andrews project. The Commission continues to ignore the fact that we have over 3,000 signatures on petitions against this road, against this path. We get about seven additional signatures every day. And this has been pretending that you've been offsetting that with the votes that you have received on your own petition. And we demonstrated the last meeting that you cannot substantiate that claim. Then there's the new one, which is you're now pretending you've had a 90% review of the 90% completed project. We were promised three times, I have asked repeatedly, for information about that review. We want a time. When was the time? Where was the place? What was the notice that was given to citizens to come and attend that meeting? Who attended it? How many people attended it? And what do the comment cards say? Isn't it interesting that the 90% one was done in the dark, and we have absolutely no idea who attended that meeting? Because it's probably because there was so much embarrassment over the last couple of meetings, when 78% of the people that attended the 50% completion said, no path. We also stopped pretending about environmental approval. That hasn't happened yet. It says so in your own NOI.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. All right, audience participation is grinding to a halt. Any other people want to speak? Audience participation?
I've checked that term.
Well, how about over and done? Okay. Audience participation is going. It's going? All right, it's all over. Audience participation is closed. We're now going to try to talk about your comments, and we're going to start off with the city manager, Mr. Hayes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. First up was Emmanuel Hill, raised infrastructure concerns and questions. We'd already flagged some of the road issues after he was at the CRE Board meeting last night, but additionally, Assistant City Manager Jones went and gave him his card and is going to follow up with the Public Works team on some of the concerns in and around his area. Just as a reminder from his comments last night, he lives right near the Maslina Maintenance Complex for the city, so there's obviously a lot of city vehicle traffic in and out of that immediate area. So, second up was Patty Sunday.
Wait, 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 hold on. Mr. Hill also said he had some real bad-looking water.
Right, part of the infrastructure. And Mr. Jones met with Mr. Hill. They have a history. He gave him his business card, and Mr. Jones is going to follow up with him first thing in the morning.
He said he wanted to know...
All things infrastructure, yes.
He wanted to know where the water could be tested. Do we know where water could be tested, or is that a secret?
No, with our lab, sir. We have a lab that can test it. So again, Mr. Jones went out there and visited with him, gave him his business card. They know each other, they have for years, and he's going to follow up with him first thing in the morning and take care of all of his concerns.
Okay, so if a constituent wanted their water tested, would they call Mr. Jones?
Yep, or they could reach out to the City Utilities Division, but on this particular issue, Mr. Jones is going to personally see to it.
I understand that, but a lot of people talk to me off and on, they probably talk to other people up here and say their... I think the water's great, personally, but I have other people that tell me they don't think it's so great. So I'm just wondering, you know, where can I send them?
They can reach out to the Utilities Division of the city underneath Public Works.
All right, thank you.
We have a superintendent over the laboratory for the city.
Good, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Good idea.
All right, and second up was Patty Sunday. She offered her congrats to the mayor and the commissioners, and also just the public and the community over the passage, over the Dover coal and all those plans and the work. She made some comments about spending, which obviously will be a subject that is discussed further in the agenda under your section, Mr. Mayor, and so we will address that at that time. Mr. Hartshog came up next, expressed his appreciation to the Commission for tabling the transportation fees issue, acknowledged the need for them, but also would like to have someone in the community play a part in the workshop, so we'll definitely make sure that the appropriate organizations get the invite for that. Ms. Dolores King came up and expressed a desire for changing, instead of ward voting, to citywide voting. As a reminder, we are working on bringing back, I believe, at the second meeting in June. Correct, Mr. Zimmerman? Information on the charter review, second meeting in June. So that would be something that we could potentially look at and entertain that. I know that's what the county does. I do believe there are some potential legal restrictions that would prevent us from doing citywide elections. I'm not sure, but if that's something the Commission would want us to look at, but that would have to be done through a charter review and an actual vote by the people through an election. I don't know if Mr. Zimmerman wants to add anything to citywide voting as opposed to ward voting?
Just that Panama City did... They used to be at large back in, I think, the late 1980s. There was litigation that the city should go to single-member districts, and as a result, there was a settlement of the litigation that resulted in changing the charter to have wards. So there's four wards. Each ward has one member that's elected, and then the mayor is elected citywide. It's something that obviously, it's been in place since the late 1980s.
So the charter would have to be changed, and we'd have to hire some lawyers and get some things straightened out to change it if people wanted to change it?
Well, the charter would have to be changed. We'd have to evaluate that old lawsuit, the old settlement that was made back in the late 1980s.
And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, but originally, the city started out with ward voting, and then at some point in the '50s, it was changed.
It may have, yes.
Interesting. Sounds like the public will changes back and forth, which we all have the right to change. If we're doing that and looking at that, people keep asking me why the mayor has to run every two years, so it won't affect me, because I don't think I'm going to run again after this next time, but maybe we could move the mayor to a four-year term, too. It's something to consider and talk about, but it would help future people, it wouldn't help me.
All right, and I believe that was the specific questions by Ms. King. And then Brenda Lewis Williams spoke about limiting the thresholds, not just for the city manager, but also the all staff. And that will be an item that will be discussed under your section, Mr. Mayor. And then she has questions about 11A, the cell tower cell. That'll be discussed under the City Manager section, information on that. And then expressed the Ninth and Sherman, there was a pothole there, it was patched, but I'm sure Mr. Murphy already has taken notes, and we'll look at a more permanent issue and dig into that issue. And then Mr. Hank Pickin came up and spoke about the Beach Drive multi-use sidewalk, made comments from, I guess, two years ago, that the road had already been given to the city. I can't speak to that. I'm not aware of that being said or promised two years ago. Of course, I wasn't in this role. And then he spoke about continued feedback and just expressed his opposition to the Beach Drive sidewalk. I do know that, you know, we've referenced these, the two competing online petitions, whatever you want to call them. And I did fail to note at the last meeting that neither of the two petitions are owned by or sponsored by or promoted by the city. They're both put forward by two different respective private individuals or groups, and we've acknowledged multiple times that, you know, there's a few thousand supporters on both sides. And so, but I was remiss in not flagging that it is not a city petition or online survey. It was just, the information was provided to us of the people that had signed the support of the path, and when that was sent in to us, I passed along to the clerk's office, and she's made it available to whoever's requested, so.
Well, now, I have looked at that, because we have argued about that up here off and on, and the thing about the Beach Drive people, you at least can find out who it is on this Facebook sort of... Well, it's Facebook, but there's another survey that keeps being listed as part of the city survey, so I'm glad it doesn't have anything to do with the city, but it's totally irrelevant. It doesn't list names, it doesn't list addresses. I think there's probably 20 names on there of supposedly several hundred. So I think Mr. Pickin has a very valid point, that 90% of the 3,000 people don't like this, and 3,000 that do like it, but we don't know who they are. And I'm a steadfast opponent of going ahead with this thing. He also talked about a 90% review. Have we had a 90% review? Because it sounded to me like we have not had a 90% review. So have we had a 90% review?
We did, and we stated multiple times that the 90% plans we've made available in the City Hall rotunda and comments would be received. I know I've shared what dates was posted before, but I don't have those written down today, so I'm happy to reconfirm those dates, and I'll provide that via email to this entire dais tomorrow morning by lunch. I just, I know it was in September. I just want to make sure I provide the exact dates to y'all.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, additionally, people requested to actually have copies of the plans themselves, either printed or digital, and we've provided those as well. I know we provided them to several folks along Beach Drive. We've even offered to print them for a few people, and we've done that as well, so.
Okay, well, Mr. Pickin's a pretty smart man, so I'm going to ask him later on where that 90% review is, because if it's out there, I'm sure he has it. And I will talk to him, and we'll try to get something before the next meeting, because I don't think he's being fairly represented. And I also would like to say that it's a very good... And I also would like to say that it's a very good, it's a good item for the next election. We have an election coming up in April, and we can have a little referendum on Beach Drive there, because I'm sure you're going to know, some people are going to support it and some people are not going to support it. So the people will get a chance to speak, and if 3,000 people come out, I'd say it's a done deal, not in favor. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, I just want to be clear, you referenced a city survey. There is no city survey. The city of Panama City has not put forward or been a part of any survey, either for or against the path. I just want to make sure that's crystal clear. Neither the Beach Drive petition opposing it, or those in support of it. We have not initiated, been a part of. All we've done is we were providing information. And I do believe both petitions have names on them, just because I've seen them, the printed versions and what's been provided here. But I just, the key point is, the city has not, does not have any survey on this, or any online petition, just to be clear.
Well, to be very clear, some people up here have said we have equal representation on both sides, and they have referenced, they have referenced this survey. So to be quite clear, the city has not done this, done a survey, and the Beach Drive, the city doesn't recognize either survey, is what we're trying, what you're saying, I do believe.
I think we agree, Mr. Mayor. I've acknowledged, and I think other elected officials have, that we acknowledge that there are two surveys out there, and they roughly have the both, both numbers on both sides. But, and we admit, we just, we take them both at their face value. So I think it's, I think, I think we agree. I just want to make sure that people know that we are not, we have not initiated any of the petitions on either side, and I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. I can't make a motion, but I can ask any of the commissioners if they want to let Mr. Pickens come up and speak. He said for two minutes, somebody has to make a motion if we're going to do it.
You can pass your gavel.
All right, I'll pass the gavel. I bet I can't get a second. All right. I am making a motion to allow Mr. Pickens to come up, because he has spoken multiple times of this, and he doesn't seem to be able to get an answer. So I am making a motion to allow him to come up and speak for two minutes.
Is there a second?
Angle of the court.
I told you.
So I would like to say, since there was...
Motion dies for last second.
Is that Jonathan, instead of Mr. Pickens having to get dressed and come down, I mean, can we just set up another meeting to sit down and address some of the, like, where he can take his time and be able to, we can all talk and discuss, just if he has some, clearly, three minutes is not enough. And I would be willing to, if Mr. Pickens, if you're willing to do that, and it doesn't have to be me, if you'd rather it be somebody else, to sit down and just talk about this with no time limit. And any kind of proof he needs, anything that he wants, any questions he wants, anything he wants to bring to me that maybe I don't know, like, that would be...
I would be happy to set that meeting up, ma'am, with you and Mr. Murphy as the project lead. We'll provide printed copies of the plans, and if he wants to provide any input on the plans and designs, happy to hear that, yes, ma'am.
And I'm happy to step out and let Josh, or somebody else come in when I'm...
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're willing, I'm...
Building the path or not building the path?
What, all the things, absolutely.
So where you're willing to set up a meeting, I think you're saying?
Yes, I would love to do that. And I've got Mr. Pickens' number, I'm going to reach out to him.
All right, I'm going to tell you ahead of time, I'm coming to that meeting, and to avoid sunshine, I will just keep my mouth shut. There's no reason that I can't come to meetings like that. I know you like, everybody likes to hide behind this sunshine business and say, the two of us, three of us, we can't ever be together. But I will, I do intend to come to that meeting, I'll just keep my mouth shut and won't say anything.
You can be there.
It'll be difficult.
It'll be published as a public meeting. If there's more than one commissioner at a meeting, it has to be published as a public meeting.
Okay.
That's all. You can go to any meeting you want to, it just has to be notified as a public meeting. And anybody can come.
And you're always welcome to come. I've met with Mr. Pickens before, you're welcome to come anytime.
And then you might potentially have the media, and if we want to have a private conversation with Mr. Pickens, that would be very difficult, so.
Well, we're big boys and girls, we can do difficult things. All right, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Pickens. We're going to give you more than three minutes, one of these days. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to pull any item out of the consent agenda, or make a motion to approve them all as one item?
Motion, we approve all the items on the consent agenda.
With that, but I do want to just point out Hints Park, so.
So wait, you want to pull something out?
I just want to make a comment on that project. I mean, we can motion and approve it together, I'd just like to make a comment.
Well, we'll motion approve it, and then you can do in the comment section.
During discussion, yeah.
Right, exactly, okay. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as one. Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I should have let you comment earlier, I'm sorry. I got out of order.
That's all right. I just wanted to point out, like, the Hints Park project has been a multi-year deal. It involved our state representatives, our governor, in getting the fund needed to fix flooding in this neighborhood. And so this is a major improvement project that's coming forward, now fully funded. And so I just wanted to point out, excited for it, and excited for the residents that are going to benefit from it.
Okay.
That was it.
Moving on to item 10, let me see if I can find my paper. Okay, item 10 is several items that I wanted to talk about. And the first one is a citizens advisory committee. And we talked about this at the CRA board, but I said yesterday that at the CRA board, I didn't think that was satisfactory. And at our last meeting, when we talked about the citizens advisory committee, Mr. Hayes said he was going to do some research, and he was going to bring us back items of what other cities in our state did on citizens advisory committee. So I would like to let him talk about what he wants, what is available if we want to do a citizens advisory committee, because I don't have the staff to do the research. I bring the items up, and I expect him to do the research. So it's up to you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you'll look, there was a packet or an item that was added, it's labeled 10A. It is the memo that you all reviewed last night in your capacity as the CRA board. But I went in there and I highlighted the appropriate items. Obviously, expanding the size of the city commission is not really an option without a full charter review and then a change to the charter. So we focused on kind of the two options, to, again, to evaluate all of the potential benefits and drawbacks of different approaches to, the key goal to foster community engagement and representation within the Panama City, and specifically, the Parks, Culture and Recreation Department. You can just swap out CRA with PCR. So the options would be, you know, socials or town halls, you know, in each of the four districts, or wards that we have in the city, you know, or connected with a specific park or an activity, or potentially establish advisory committees, you know, maybe have two people for each ward to kind of serve on this. All of the relevant background information and research that we've provided, and looking at other cities around the state and kind of what they did. Again, annual open public meetings or town halls, which are the socials. You know, staff recommendation based on the analysis and information provided above, and again, last night, where we discussed it in detail. Socials or town halls are the most effective and equitable method for engaging the community and driving progress in Panama City and all of our redevelopment efforts. The inclusivity and direct engagement provided by socials or town halls surpassed the limitations of an advisory committee or an expanded city commission. Again, this approach ensures every voice is heard, avoids some of the pitfalls, and promotes transparency and accountability. So again, it is our belief that socials or town halls align with the core values of inclusivity, transparency, and community empowerment. We believe that prioritizing this approach, the Panama City, all of the team, but especially the PCR, can set a new standard for effective public engagement and meaningful progress in our communities as we seek to recover and redevelop. I'll just add, one thing that we did note, and I believe this was part of the conversation when you brought this up at the last meeting, as well as last night, and that is, if we did want to establish some type of advisory committee, you know, led by citizens, led by the community, number one, one of the concerns is, I just want to highlight this one, and that is, you know, if you create these formal committees or advisory boards, you know, it then kind of triggers some of the sunshine law, where minutes have to be taken, the folks on the board have limited communication available. So that's one of the concerns that was shared with us. However, if there is, and this is the specific, I think, that has come up over the last couple weeks, as we've talked about this, and I believe it was mentioned at the last commission meeting and last night, if there is a particular issue that we want to assign a citizens committee to kind of task and make recommendations, a particular item, a particular challenge, I'll give an example. We have about roughly 60 parks in the city of Panama City. Conversely, myself and a couple of senior staffers visited the city of Greenville, South Carolina, not long ago to meet with some of their elected officials and senior staff, because they're, you know, the work that they've done, we're kind of 20 years kind of behind them to some degree. And, but they're a city of almost 75,000 people, and they have about 30 parks. And so this is just an example to kind of give, kind of legs to this discussion, is, let's say we wanted to, you know, reduce the number of parks in the city, you know, by 30%, and then, you know, being able to take those resources and then maximizing the condition of the other parks. I think that would be something that a citizens advisory committee could lead that effort on, kind of like what the military does with the BRAC committee, when they look at base realignment enclosures around the nation. Something like that could happen. So staff would obviously implement anything that this body desires. But, you know, but I think, you know, having them with a specific task and assignment could be very beneficial. Otherwise, we believe that having the town halls or the socials, either as a group or individually, you know, with each commissioner within their respective ward, obviously with the mayor attending all of them, is the best way to really seek that input and that feedback and create more of a dialogue. So this information is provided to each of y'all, it's a very similar conversation to last night, and staff would appreciate any direction or feedback that this body would like to collectively provide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm disappointed with your analysis, because a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, we talked about this, we talked about having citizens advisory councils. And my understanding was that you were going to look into citizens advisory councils and tell us how to do it if we wanted to do it. If you throw it to these town hall meetings, that's the best way to just simply bury things. I think if you want, if you want some continuity, I think you need these committees, and the committees can, they can follow things, and they can solicit ideas from the community. And I brought up the idea of the Parks and Recreation, and I brought that up because I thought that was something that we could start on. But I envision us having several, several citizens advisory committee that would, that would meet and get input from the citizens and then bring it to us in the city. So what I would like to do, is I would like to make a motion that, well, wait, I can't make a motion. I am going to make a motion that the city manager research the citizens advisory committee and bring it back to the commission on how we can do it, what sort of guidelines we need, what sort of things we need to watch out for. Sunshine, I don't, I don't think that's a serious thing. It could be, but I don't think it is. But I want the city manager to research the citizens advisory committee. I know you've already made up your mind that you want a city, you want the socials, but I don't, I don't want that. I want the citizens advisory committee. So I want you to research that and bring it back to us in a timely fashion, and I would like that to be a motion.
Is there a second?
I would like to discuss, so I'll second for discussion.
So it's been moved and seconded for discussion?
So I actually kind of have a different take on this. Like, I don't think that staff is pushing back against necessarily. They may not, they may not want to, like, have another layer of complexity to government or things like that. But I think what I've communicated multiple times is I'm willing to support charter review committee, specific time, specific purpose. Same thing with Parks, Culture, and Recreation, specific time, specific purpose. Until we identify what that specific time and that specific purpose is, there's not, there's not anything to take action on as far as what I, as far as what I view. Like, I mean, I think the recommendation we heard was a consolidation of parks. Is that something that we want to put to a citizens advisory committee to see if there's parks that we're either underutilizing or not utilizing, or need to change the way we're utilizing them? Like, that sounds like a great project. And maybe it's a six-month endeavor to do that. Like, those are the things that I would happily support, but just creating a committee for committee's sake is not something that I'm interested in. Specific purpose, I'll support it.
Well, I think that you don't know what you'll get out of a committee unless you have a committee, and I think it does give the citizens a chance to, a chance to talk to us. Maybe, maybe they'll come up with ideas that we don't like, and we don't have to do everything they want. My idea is to try to get more involvement, more involvement of the citizens. And so it gives them a definite role if they have a citizens advisory committee that meets and they go over things. And who knows, they might go a year and not be able to come up with anything they can talk about, because they have so many things, or maybe they, maybe they think everything, maybe they think they can come talk to us, like you're talking about, and get it resolved that way without, without making any formal, formal actions. But I think if we've got 50, 60 parks in there, there's certainly, there's certainly probably 30 ideas on what to do with them. And again, like I said, I think the Parks and Recreation was the easiest bite of the apple, and that's why I chose that. But I think we might want to have something that might want to look at the police, and is there a way, do the citizens feel engaged with the police department? Do they think something might be better done there? We might find out a whole bunch of things that we didn't know about, or maybe we don't want to know about. So I don't know. But I'm, I'm in favor of it, and that's why I'm in favor.
Anyone else on the commission care to address the motion on the floor?
I just would like to say that I'm always in favor of citizen input, which is why, you know, Dover coal and all the things we've ever done, and I've had town halls and put together committees. But I would, my, honestly, my concern with putting one board together that's an advisory for all things, is that then you only have three people speaking for an entire, and then so if we don't have, so, when I have socials or we have town halls, or whatever, you hear from multiple people. So I'm for citizen input, but I'm for, like, as it comes, like we did with the MLK Rec Center, and we had a committee that was interested in that, and we had youth that were a part of that, as to plan for that project and give input for that project. So I'm for doing the committees as they come along and there's projects or, but, I mean, look at, I haven't heard a single complaint from the community that Keith has not been overly engaged with citizen input and doing, you know, I know he's all in the community, you just announced it, that he's going to be in all of the wards and doing, you know, having all updates and getting community input. So if there's a problem that I'm not aware of, which there may be, Mayor, and I think your heart is pure on that, I think you want to hear from everybody, too. But I'm, if there's a problem, like, if there's a problem, like, maybe you've heard in Glenwood, that there was a problem with the, like, I remember at a time we did a committee for the community policing, but it was for that purpose, and then kind of what the community wanted, and then, and then for Mark, it was applied, you know? So I don't want it to appear that we don't want it, I just think that I'm game for citizen input all the time. I just don't know if, like, unless we're missing something, I'm not sure, like, if there's a complaint that I'm missing that we need right now. If we do, I'd be in support of that.
I mean, I think where I still sit on it is just give a specific time, a specific purpose, and, and, and we can go, and it doesn't have to be that issue. It could be, it could be senior citizen engagement. I mean, it doesn't matter to me what it is, but if you just give it to the team and said, we're just creating more government, and I don't know that that's a good thing. And I just, be specific, fix time, like, I'm all in.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the, like, I'd echo what he said, time-bound, I've already said this from the get-go, time-bound, project-focused, yeah. I could see myself supporting something like that. But just to create something, just to create something and have it go on and on and on without having a scope or a set amount of time is not wise.
And I would say that I, too, am in favor of citizen engagement, and want to do so in a structured manner that... in a structured manner that leads to some specific actions that can be taken. What we saw following Hurricane Michael with the series of charrettes led us into a plan that we are still working on. This city is in the midst of a building infrastructure project series that is unprecedented for us, and I would be in favor of some sort of series of citywide meetings that gauge the pulse of where we are based on what we did following Michael with the charrettes and as we are coming to this end of building that was started after Hurricane Michael to begin now a series of, wouldn't be charrettes necessarily now, but civic meetings to engage the citizens in planning beyond this $300 million worth of infrastructure and the Martin Theater and the Martin Luther King Recreation Center that are going on now. So I think there's more to be, to be determined about how to go forward, and that not necessarily is the citizen advisory committee or group the one way that we should pursue at this time. Any other, Mayor?
One brief comment. I referenced the parks and recreation, just, I think there's probably 10 or 20 citizens advisory, so I just reference that as an example. So what I'm asking is that the city manager, staff, find a way to do the citizens advisory. And they, one of the ways they could do it is they could make the citizens advisory have a definite role and a definite time. All that could be added to it. I'm just looking for citizens advisory and looking for which ones. I think senior citizens, I think that's a great idea, how we can engage. So there's a lot of things that, that I don't know, but I'm thinking that if we ask the public, we might learn something. That's, that's my whole goal. Parks and Recreation is doing a fine job. That might be a bad example.
No, it's a good example.
But, but it's just an example. It, it doesn't have to be that way.
But I think the, the fact that you're saying that we need many of these is suggested of the fact that we need a broad look, and, and so I would be in favor of us determining what that broad look should look like. Is it this layer of 10 citizen advisory committees for all of these different departments? Or is it a broad-based, citywide series that engage most of the community? And we could add a survey with that as well, you know, to, to move us forward. In my role as a moderator facilitator with the Kettering Foundation, I was part of a city-states multi-meeting series in Kansas City, Missouri, that led to a citizen-driven approach to redevelopment. And so that's where, where this idea comes from. And I serve on the Board of the Florida Civic Association where we're looking at places where we could do some civic scans, and I think we would be ideal for something like that.
I would agree. Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Halagus?
No.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Commissioner Granger?
No.
Commissioner Street?
No.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion fails, four to one. One to four, sorry.
Oh, thank you. About getting a drink.
All right, now we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Okay, I'll do that. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to draw attention. We kind of dismissed early before I got to, to finish. I actually had a motion to follow up yours, if that's okay, to finish up that item before we move on.
Did we have, we had a motion to second, didn't?
We did, but I was trying to make another motion right after that, but then we went into dismissal, so I'd like to, if we can finish that item up before we move on to another one?
Sure, no, no question. We can finish, you want to finish back on A, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, we instruct staff to put together a, a framework for a citizen advisory committee inside of Parks Culture and Recreation specifically targeted towards the, the consolidation of parks, which has been mentioned by seven different members of the board, and for a period of, let's say, six months.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Six months, though. I, I think we need longer, but, you know, I, I had to take a small victory there, you know, when you, when you get it, so. And, you know, maybe it'll do so well that we might want to go more than six months.
Did the chairman just volunteer?
We basically did what we all just talked about. We all wanted the same thing. It's just, we just wanted a committee for a purpose, and then, so that's what you gave it. So Mayor, you bring, if you have a purpose, I'll support that too, just so you know. I want you to know that.
Well, thank you, because we are supporting six months of advisory on Parks Culture and Recreation, so I'm going to bring something to the next meeting and, Ms.
Parks consolidation. Parks consolidation.
Yeah, there's purpose.
Oh, Parks consolidation?
Right.
All right. I'll bet Ms. Brenda Lewis-Williams can come to me in the next couple of weeks and give me another topic so we can bring it to the, to the meeting and talk about it, because I think we could, I think we could use those, and I like your limit, and I like to target. I think that's good. So, great, okay?
Let it be known, I don't want to sit on any of these committees.
All right. Your objection is heard. All right, we're going to talk about discussion on limiting the city manager's singular signing authority to $50,000. I think right now the city manager can sign without any, anyone's second signature to $100,000. My feeling is that it should be limited to $100,000, so that's what I want to talk about. I think that.
That's what it is.
Pardon? No, I want to limit it to 50.
Oh.
I'm sorry if I said that wrong. It is 100 now.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so my, my thoughts, after I did a little study and a little thought, I think it should go down to 50,000, and that's, that's my recommendation, so I want to bring that up for discussion.
Well, Mayor, if I understand the reason it was raised, it was because of the magnitude of construction that was going on. Jenna, Josh, help me.
Yeah, actually, it was even before then because it was so inefficient for them to have to wait and not be able to execute on things that were, at the time, though, I think it was 25, it was even less than, yeah, and it was like, I mean, everything was coming to the city commission. It wasn't, it wasn't a problem coming to the city commission, it was a problem because it made city staff inefficient. They could not work as quickly as they needed to, and so that was the history on that.
Now, that makes sense, that it would slow down for sure, and it would be a small amount of money to slow down.
So what, so just from, from my experience, one, what Jenna says is absolutely correct. So it had a lot to do with the size and scales of projects, how quickly execution was trying to be happening. We are getting closer to a point where it's starting to kind of, I'm not going to say construction's tapering off because we got a lot more projects to go, but it's not as chaotic as what it was. Less emergency repairs, less emergency work, less things like that. However, there's, there's two things, and I think this goes right back to fixed time, fixed purpose, and clarity. So I've been a part of two other boards that serving in this position, and in both of those, we addressed spending authority. And why we did it was ultimately to, to create better transparency or to create something, something along those lines. In this particular instance, I think we have to look at two things. One, I think like the public comment said about, hey, we, we've got this reserve conversation that we've been having. I think that's valid to this discussion. But then the other side is you've also got the length of our meetings, which is part of this discussion. And so it doesn't matter if you're transparent if nobody can follow a seven-hour meeting. And I think that's what I'm getting more from the general public, is I can't, I can't, I can't know what's going on because there's just so much volume of it. And so I don't know how to fix that. I'm not going to say that I know exactly how to fix that specific issue, but what I would like to know in looking at this is two things. One, what is the reserve percentage that this commission is going to hold to? Like, we, Jan's put us in, each one of our financial documents is we have this resolution, I think says 30%, Jan, or is it 40%, something like that?
It's 10% of unassigned plus another 30% for disaster relief.
So it's 40% is what our reserve number is. I think we all know we're still recovering from a disaster, that's not realistic. I think even Jan's communicated that to us as well. And so, but we've got this general accounting practice for our municipalities. What was that, Jan? What was that percentage?
It's 16.7%.
So 16.7%. I think that, for me, what, the way I've looked at it is if we can just keep that in reserves, I don't think the spending authority conversation is, is as big a deal. But once we start seeing reserve numbers go, it's, it's okay for us to slow down sometimes and take an extra, an extra pass at things. So, one, what I would ask for clarity is that we pick a reserve percentage that we are going to have a goal set for our commission and what our standards are going to be, and 40% is unrealistic given where we're at. The second thing is that, that staff would communicate to us how many more items this is going to bring. Like, if, if you tell me that this is going to be, you know, 10 more items on the, on the agenda and it can't go on consent, well, you're talking about, we're going to be meeting every single week. And if that's what the job takes, that's what the job takes. I'm not pushing back on that, but I think that's something that we should want to know before we make a decision on that. And those are the only things I've heard from the staff as far as like, hey, you know, we don't know what this will affect. And then you've got to show a structure, because it's not just his spending authority. Then it brings down your assistant city managers, it brings down your department heads, it brings down underneath that, and so on and so forth. So there's a cascading effect that goes to that efficiency conversation that you were talking about. It's not just a $50,000 spending cut, it's, you know, it may be, when you take every layer of the city into account, it could be a million-dollar spending authority cut if you added up every single person that makes a purchase. So anyway, those are my two things. I just like, pick a, pick a reserve percentage that makes sense, whatever that number is. And then two, and then two, like, let's know what this is going to affect to our meetings before we make a formal decision on it. That's it.
All right, well, 10B, which is what I put on the agenda, is the city manager's singular signing authority. This doesn't have anything to do with the reserves. I appreciate your comments about the reserves, and that's something that I think we need to talk about, but it needs to be on another meeting, or you can put it on your part of the, you can put it on the commissioner's part of the agenda, but I think that's a good point, something, but I would like to study that. I'd like to talk to Jan, I'd look, look at some numbers before I'm going to talk about reserves. So, 10B is about limiting the city manager's signing authority to $50,000. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect, or do you, would you like me to pass the gable and make a motion?
Doc, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Okay, it's fine. Because it's coming from you, I would like to know, is there something you're concerned about? Like, is there some fraud or illegal, like, is there, what brought this, like, was there a specific item that Jonathan signed off on that you don't approve of? I'm just kind of curious, because that might help me understand.
Thank you for asking, and you brought it up, so I'm going to answer it. I don't think Jonathan has the business experience to be handling $100,000 without somebody looking over his shoulder. And I think a good, a good example of this is the Saunders Diesel property in St. Andrews. The city had two prop, two appraisals for about $750,000. The people that are selling it had two appraisals for like 1.1, 1.2 million. So Jonathan averaged all four of them and came up with a number. That's, that's not kosher. We, we don't pay, if we have appraisals, we average our appraisals, we don't average them all. So I think that is some evidence of some business experience that he doesn't have. I think he's learning it. Do I think there's been any fraud? No, I don't think there's any, and I'm not accusing anybody of fraud. You, Jan, anybody. No, I don't, I don't see that at all.
Why? Never knows.
So, so glad you asked the question, but that's the reason that I brought it up. I think 50,000 is, and I think we've also had the discussion that we had to move things pretty fast because we had lots of stuff happening, so that's why it was moved up to 100,000. So I'm saying, just like it's been said up here today, that things are slowing down, we still need to do, do things, but I just thought 50,000 was more reasonable, so that's why I brought it up.
So I would just like to say that I do think that the appraisals obviously were well under $50,000, so you, he could have done that anyway.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But I will say that if we, when it comes to real estate in the future, the reason that city managers, at least in the past, you and him probably, is because there's, the policy is to take those and take those and average, and then you can take a certain percentage over that if you can, you know, justify why it's, you know, would be more beneficial to the community in the future. But if we want to change that, we could prob, I mean, if that's something that you would want to talk about, I believe that's something we could put into policy that says, we get our own two appraisals, and, I mean, I'm not saying I would be for that necessarily, but I'm saying like, that there's a way to tighten that if that was one of the issues. I mean, it's not going to matter to me, I'm not going to be here, but I'm just saying in the future, if y'all want to tighten it up some way, there's a, we could change the policy that says that we're not going to average from other, from the sellers.
I, I don't think we need to tighten it up, it's already tightened up. It doesn't say anything about going and get averages from the sellers, so I think that was, I think that was wrong from the get-go.
Doesn't it? Is it, no, but is there a policy that says that the city manager can go over a certain percentage of?
If he goes over 500,000, there's something happens. Would you like me to?
Yeah, we would.
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
I would like to understand.
The, the, the city has chosen not to have a specific ordinance but to follow the statute, and the statute really doesn't directly apply, but yet the Attorney General interpreted it, and here it is. The statute says that if a piece of property is $500,000 or less, you're to get one appraisal, at least one appraisal, and then you are to pay five, whatever the amount of the appraisal. But then it, but if it is more than, boy, you just put me on the spot.
I think it's 15%. We don't.
Yeah, something. But anyway, it, it takes a supermajority vote, it takes four out of five. And in this case, it was over 500,000 multiple appraisals, which the statute would require, were obtained, too. And then if you pay more than the average, it takes four out of five. This ultimately was a decision by the city commission. The role of the city manager and, and staff was to present it to the city commission, whether or not they wanted to proceed with the purchase, and four out of five said yes. And that's, you know, it's still going to come back as far as the, the end of the due diligence period. But you haven't answered the question of how many, if, if we've got two appraisals, we don't need any more than two appraisals, and so obviously we can average those two appraisals. Why would we ever want an appraisal from the seller if, if we're, if we're the one, let's see, yeah, no, they're the seller. If we're buying, why would we want, why would we care what the seller thought it was worth? We're the one paying the money. So my question is, I think we only needed two, and we got two. And I think that's what Ms. Lucas asked. I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Halagus.
All good, it's an honor, it's fine.
You're a man.
I'm a man.
The only, the only thing, the only thing I would add to this discussion, because, you know, like, we've got a, we've got a lift station that we have to move and relocate that's in St. Andrews. You know, it's, it's Lift Station 16, it's one of the worst ones that we've got, it's got the manhole out in the bay. So we looked up a block, we found a piece of property that is good to do it, won't damage any sensory oaks, those kind of things. First appraisal came back at, at 46,000. The seller's not willing to sell it for that. And so, like, what do we do in those cases? I'm not in favor of using eminent domain, so at some point in time, you have to negotiate. At ultimate point in time, a seller, it does matter what the seller thinks, because ultimately, if you want something, the seller gets to say whether or not they're going to sell it. And, and sometimes it's to the public benefit for everyone to negotiate. And I think that just saying that something's just a blanket because an appraisal says, well, you can, you can get, as you can see, even in that agreement, you can get four or five different opinions, and they all evaluate it differently. And so I just, you know, I, I know not everybody does a lot of real estate and those kind of things, but we've had people that come up here, they're the real estate professionals, explaining that that purchasing policy, although it is not perfect, and I agree, it's not perfect, there are instances where it makes sense to negotiate on the behalf of the public with a seller to achieve the outcome that the community wants, so.
That's irrelevant to what we're talking about here. What Ms. Halagus has said is that if, she's asking about the policy of appraisals, and do we need two appraisals? And I think And I think we do. Did you have anything more that you wanted to add?
No, I'm sure that's going to come up again before due diligence or chestnut, but I just wanted to address that when we were there. That, that's all, that's all.
I guarantee, and I'd also, since you brought up that Lift Station 12 or 16, whatever it was, I went to that meeting. And interestingly enough, the piece of property that, that the city is talking about putting a lift station on, the property owner was at that meeting, and they were acting like they're going to give it away. My wife, when I talked to her about it, she said, they ain't giving that away. And I've, understand, they're not giving it away, especially if we have a $46,000 estimate and they want more, and it's just a little tiny piece of property. So anyway, I'm not, I, I think we do need to go negotiate. I don't like eminent domain. Again, I, my, my idea, my rec, my discussion point here is to limit the singular signing authority to $50,000. I think it's time that we did that. And if, nobody wants to make a motion for that, I will. Anybody want to make? Nope. Okay, sorry.
Is there a motion?
Ms. Mayor, pro temp, I would like to make a motion that we limit the city manager's singular signing authority on items to $50,000.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that, that staff works with each of us over the next two weeks to get to a reserve percentage that we all can agree to, as far as our goal reserve percentage that makes sense, and bring that to us at our next meeting. And, and that our city manager would bring us a, what the effects are, and a policy of what this would affect in other departments for a $50,000 spending limit, should we operate outside that reserve percentage. Again, anything that's outside of budgetary expenses is coming to us anyway. So this is really only taking things outside budget and things that are, when we are in a financial tight situation. So reserve percentage, just to be clear, having a reserve percentage that we all can agree to and bringing that back to the next meeting for us to vote on. And then a, a plan from, from Jonathan and his team for a $50,000 limit with what the, what the effects will be of that policy. So when it's outside of those, that reserve number, does that make sense?
Want to clarify, when you say reserves, are you talking about unallocated funds only in the general fund, or are you talking about all funds?
I'm talking about general fund reserve specifically, which is most of our budgetary and discretionary spending, so. Unless somebody thinks different.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to include the, the unallocated funds we have elsewhere.
Okay, so.
Just, just any, not specifically in the.
Would it be maybe addressing, amending our fund balance policy, which is the general fund and the enterprise funds?
Yeah. Jan, does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I just need to know what funds you want to look at reserve.
I guess what I'm trying.
I mean, because really, capital project funds don't really have reserves. The operating funds really are the only ones with reserves.
Our, our main, our main fund balance, that we've had some kind of concerns and fluctuations, has been general fund, correctly.
General fund, that's correct.
So that's kind of where my, my focus is right now, because I think the other reserve funds are all strong companies.
Utilities are addressed by the rate.
Great study.
Yeah.
Study.
Okay.
So really, just the general fund is the main concern.
I would like to add on to what you're saying, if, that we would also ask the city manager to tell us what a $2 million cut would look like. In other words, what it would like if we, what it would look like if we cut $2 million from our budget, because we.
Could I follow that up in a, in a, in a second motion? Because I am supportive of that, but I'd like that to come in our budget workshop and just, I mean, give them two weeks to find $2 million, because it doesn't sound like.
Why don't both of those items we talk about at the strategic workshop?
The only reason why I say is, I mean, Jan's got another finance report that's coming out. I mean, she's, her goal is set at 40% right now. She's going to continue to say 40% is the goal until we tell of a realistic number. And, you know, and I, I think that's the piece that I'm also trying to acknowledge. We probably need to change a policy per even our clerk's recommendation to get to something realistic, so.
Have you recommended changing the policy, Jan?
Not at this point. I just, I've just informed you that you're not in compliance with it.
Okay. So, so she's not recommending that we change our policy. I think, I think we look bad, so we're changing policy so we don't look so bad, is how I see it.
I think the reality is, and I think, I think Jan would agree with this, is we are still in the midst of disaster recovery. We still have a ton of projects. So 30% of that is disaster recovery. So are we saying, while we're in the midst of recovery, we still have to be at 30%? That doesn't make sense. And I think that's just what I'm trying to acknowledge, that, and at the end of the day, and I had this conversation the other day, and we're, I was talking with some people about transportation impact fees. What are we doing to our citizens and taxpayers when they're struggling to make, and we've got tens of millions of dollars sitting into an account that's just sitting and collecting interest? I think that there's something more realistic, and it's probably not 40%, that makes sense for the households of Panama City. That's just, on a, on a larger scale of things, I don't think we just want our government, you know, with, with millions of dollars that are just sitting in a rainy day fund, when it's way outside of what any other municipality in the state is doing. I, I think that's just what I would point out, so.
Are we way outside what other municipalities are doing?
I would have to research that. I don't know.
Okay. I, I think if you choose a number, it's good to have the number, even if it looks bad, you can, because you can watch it go up and down. So I, I don't have any problem where we are if Jan likes it. But it sounds like you would have to do some research to try to figure out.
Well, best practice.
I don't know what we want.
GFOA best practice is 16.7% minimum. That's your minimum, so.
And that, and that's where I'm trying to get to, is like, doing general budget practices, not just a number that somebody picked out, you know, 20 years ago or 30 years ago. Pick a best practice and let's do it. That's where, that's where I'm at with it. I mean, like, my number's going to reflect what, what the general accounting practices are. That's where I'm at. But you guys may not be there. You may want 40%, Mr. Mayor, and you're welcome, you're welcome to ask it for it. But what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get to consensus policy. You put something on the agenda, you know, it doesn't look like there's support for exactly what you want to do. There are some items in what you're asking that I can support, and I'm just trying to help shape that. If, if now isn't the time to do it, or we want to wait until another meeting, that's fine. I just, I was just trying to be a consensus builder. That was really it.
Okay. So, wait a second. 10B failed, so you're trying, you want to make a motion that we have sort of a agenda item to look at reserves and what that number needs to be? I mean, I don't, if, if you want that and we get enough seconds and enough approval, we go ahead and do it, so.
Well, I think it's hard to evaluate the spending authority of the city manager if we don't have a realistic picture of what finances should look like. And I think that's just what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And I think that we can have one if we're willing to commit to one.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to that effect, or do you just want to wait and add it to the agenda next time?
I, I mean, I already made a motion to, to say, hey, look, everyone in the next, the next two weeks, try to build consensus around a reserve number, and then, and then creating a spending policy when we fall below that spending, or below that reserve number. And I think that's what was clear to the city manager, if that might look like a $50,000 deal, as well as the department heads. But we also need to know before we say yes or no to something, we need to know what the effects are. Is that going to create hardship on our employees, or is it going to create greater transparency and our meetings will be more efficient? I don't know, so.
If I could make a suggestion?
Thank you, please.
If, if you limit the 50,000 spending authority to just the general fund, it probably, I, I would think probably wouldn't have that big of an effect.
So let's talk.
Because that's not where the big capital projects are being spent from. They're being spent in other places.
Okay.
I mean, just look at that, at the general, the effects on the general fund.
I amend my motion, since we have a reserve issue in the general fund, that we look at our percentage, and we also look at spending policy change until we meet whatever percentage we can get to in consensus.
Can you repeat the motion?
So my motion is, in the next, following with our next financial statements, that we would have a, a reserve consensus that we can vote on, amount, whatever that for the general fund, and then we have a spending policy of $50,000 when we fall below that reserve percentage.
So the spending limit of the city manager is kind of a floating, it's a floating thing because if we're above it.
It's meant to be reactionary to when we are in a financial restraint. That's all, that's all that is. Which I think that's what the, I thought that was the intent of, of the thing. Now, the, the business acumen, we all went through our reviews with Jonathan. He has a tremendous amount of experience with, with Health and Human Services. It was also along the border, managing a giant budget having to do with encampments that were there. I, I don't see any issues with his ability to manage a budget nor that expending authority. I think what I'm trying to say is, it makes sense, and I think it will make sense to the public, as well as the team, that we restrain ourselves when we dip below our reserve policy.
So whatever policy we come up with, we're going to be below that, right off the bat, right?
Below what? Maybe, maybe not, depending on what number you pick. I mean, like, I don't know what your consensus number is, but this last month, we were at the reserve balance. We were, we were good. And as long as we can control our manager's spending, finishing through audits, I hope that we stay close to it, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and I don't know if it was Commissioner Halagus or Commissioner Lucas that said this, but I just think one key thing to keep in mind is, regardless of what my spending authority is, whoever happens to be in the seat, if it's not already in the budget that you all have reviewed and approved, then it has to come before y'all, even if it's, you know, $5,000. So I just, I just, I think that, I just make sure that.
I've got to say that.
Yeah, so that, that is a key point. So if I bring you anything, it's, it's already in the budget. And if it's not in the budget, you know, the clerk has made it clear that a budget amendment will have to be done, and it will come before y'all. So I, I'm not, I just want to make sure it's clear that I'm not spending money or approving money, and it's really the departments that, whose budgets you've reviewed and approved. I'm not authorizing, you haven't already authorized on the front end as part of the budget for the city. I just, I think that's a key thing. I'm not just dreaming up stuff to spend over $50,000. And if I did come up with something new or different, it would have to come through y'all as a budget amendment.
I, I think what Jan pointed out is this affects very little. Like, we don't approve payroll every week. We budget for that every year. We authorize positions. That is a huge expense, but it doesn't come to us every single time. You understand what I'm saying? Like, like, we have a budgetary process in which we select things that we're going to approve at a year.
But what are we solving for, then?
I think what we're solving for is, is trying to create an element, this is what I, this is what I see it as. You know, for the last eight months, we have heard the city's going bankrupt, and that has been what our community senses and feels. I mean, I just spent collecting petitions and going through that. There is a significant number of people in our community that think that. And so, now, we may know from our perspectives here what the realistic picture of that, because we get financial reports, we have meetings every single week, we go through those things. But what this is, and this is what I feel like, is where the mayor's coming from, is he's just trying to communicate, look, we're tightening our belt because of what, what it, the sense is in the community. And I think that's really what's being solved for here. Just to be completely, like, just blunt with it, I don't know how much this is going to affect. Do I think this is really going to change spending? No. I think a more, a more apt way to do it is by saying, hey, look, we approved a budget, we want to try to find $2 million in operational expenses and savings. That creates savings. Making a $50,000, $100,000 adjustment, although the general public, you know, it sounds like a massive number, and I agree with that, saying somebody can just go spend $100,000, but Jonathan just can't go spend $100,000 on something that's not budgeted that we haven't already approved. I don't think the public understands that. And so what's really being solved for here is just simply making a statement of, you know, we're, we're tightening our belt because the community feels that we are tight. And, and in some aspects, we are tight. And, and anyway, I, I guess, if that, I don't know if that makes any sense. I'm just trying to talk it out, and, and maybe I said too much in that, I don't know. But I mean, it's, it's the reality of it. Like, to think that a $50,000 versus $100,000 is going to change anything in the spending aspects on stuff, it's only on stuff that we haven't budgeted. It's only, like, it just, I don't know that it's going to be successful in achieving what I think everyone's intent is, but I think everybody feels good when you do it.
And what you say, I think you're right. I think the 50,000, 100,000 is really pretty meaningless, but I think you've morphed into a good discussion, a good discussion about our reserves. So I would, I would wholly support looking at the reserves at the next meeting and choosing a number, working with Jan, and I think that's what you said, something to that effect.
So, so are you saying that, like, look, let's hold off on the spending authority conversation and let's focus on the reserves?
Well, you already voted against that, so I don't, I don't have a problem.
Well, I mean, I was trying to get something that, like, we could build consensus on, but if we can do that, I think we'll build full consensus around looking at our reserve, reserve number, whatever makes sense. Jan and I would look at others and, and try to come up with a number for that. And then from that, we can take that number, and then when we get to our budget workshop, we can actually make some conversations on what we need to change, and we can give clarity to our team on what we're asking them to do. I have never, ever, once experienced pushback from Jonathan and his leadership on trying to achieve something when it makes sense and it's clear. And I think that if we provide clarity to our team, I think we've got a whole line of department heads and people that want to do something right for our city. I just think sometimes we're just not very clear in, in what we're asking.
So would, would you be in favor of the process that you just, the timeline that you just articulated, and have that as part of our strategic budget workshop?
I would feel better about that.
So Jan, will you bring us back with next month's financials? What a, what a, I guess, a general practice or, or average or something like that reserve number would be with your report?
Certainly.
And then all of this will move to our discussion in, in our strategic budget workshop.
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think one thing, Mr. Mayor, to, as far as checks and balances, I mean, no cash flow out of the city without Jan signing off on it.
Right. If it's not, if it's not right, I'm not signing it.
Yeah.
I don't care what his authority is.
And, and I, yes, and so I think that, I think checks and balances are good and important, and I, I welcome that. I welcome accountability. And, and to that end, I don't, and I've said this before, I don't even know how to initiate a PO or initiate a check request, as God is my witness. So I approve it, and the final sign-off is Jan, who controls any cash flow out for the city.
Well, I saw this as more telling the public we're tightening our belt, which I think everybody sees that, sees that. But I think going on to a discussion about our reserves is much more important, so I would think.
I think that's of substance. I think the other was more a political statement. And I think the substance piece is really where we should keep our.
Right. People, people can see you cut somebody's budget, or somebody's signing authority, that, you know, that's, but it doesn't really mean anything. I, I understand. But I think, I think the idea of the reserves is something that we do need to look at, and so great, I like that.
Will you withdraw your motion and? Well, you withdraw your motion and?
Withdrawn and amending it for the.
Direction.
Yeah, for the direction of you to bring a average reserve number based upon practice with your next month's budgetary report, and then our discussion on cuts and getting to that percentage and keeping that percentage moves to the strategic priorities workshop.
Okay.
What's the motion?
No motion. He withdrew the motion.
All right.
That was just direction.
If everybody's good with that, then I think we can move forward without any motions.
I'm good. Moving on to 10C, discussion of golf carts and low-speed vehicles in Panama City. In August, we talked about golf carts and low-speed vehicles, and we were supposed to come back in two weeks or so and talk about whether we wanted to have registration and/or insurance on the golf cart. So what I want to talk about today, we're essentially, our golf cart, low-speed vehicles, we're following the state recommendations. But what I want to look at is, in Panama City, I would like to see us have some kind of a sticker where somebody has to register the golf cart. And the reason is because that shows who the owner is. If somebody steals it, of course, they could always peel the sticker off, but it helps us understand who owns it. And also, when they get that sticker, we could give them, we could have like a QR code, and we could give them the rules, we could give them some safety advice, and so that would be a form of instruction. So we would be instructing them, and we would have a handle on how many golf carts there were and who owned them. So, and as far as insurance, that's another item, if we wanted to talk about insurance. But in our August meeting, we talked about the possibility of insurance and the possibility of a registration. So I'm bringing this back, we were supposed to bring it back a while back, but it, you know, it got lost. We're busy. So what I would like to talk about today is the registering the golf carts and, let's see, and the possibility of insurance.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out, you guys have an additional item. I emailed it out over the weekend, item 10C, you have a memo on golf carts. It was emailed to each of you in advance of this meeting, and then you have copies that were provided physically here. And yes, a registration program was discussed, but there was no consensus reached or specific direction given. So summary of the, first page of the memorandum. Now, we did, we did look into some information from Gulf Breeze as a potential option, and that's included as well. So I just want to bring the attention to the commission of the memo again that was emailed over the weekend, and also provided hard copies this evening.
Okay. Again, in August, we talked about registration and insurance, and we were going to bring it back, so that's why I'm bringing it back, to talk about registration and insurance.
I think what I recall from that meeting is there wasn't consensus, but I am in support of a very simplified registration process, similar to what's happened to Gulf Breeze for a sticker. Maybe it's multi-year, maybe it's that, but something that creates some type of mechanism for the education purpose of giving someone, hey, this is your map, this is your stuff from those pieces. So I'm supportive of doing that. I'm happy to make a motion on that, but I think the reason why it hasn't come back is I don't think everyone's on that exact same page. I think some are, and I can see this perspective, too, of if there's not a problem, why create a registration for it? And I think that's kind of what the feedback I got back from the team when I asked about it as well is.
That information's included as well, Commissioner and Mr. Mayor. Over the last six months, there have been no reports of accidents or injuries, and four tickets were issued.
So if I'm going to say something, that's my biggest complaint, is that we don't have, and this is where maybe the education piece would be good, we don't have clear direction. Like, I had somebody get pulled over for not having the yellow thing on the back, but we haven't, we haven't, like, you know, like, we haven't educated anybody, and then people were like, what is going on? Why am I getting pulled over? Or whatever. So, or like, they're, they weren't wearing, they weren't wearing their seat, but this isn't Cove, this wasn't even, like, downtown, but they weren't wearing their seatbelt or something, and one got pulled over for that, and then another one, they said it didn't matter, because, so it's just kind of a, I think there is some confusion about what, so I don't know how to get the education piece out there. The only reason I wasn't for registration was because, not that I'm against registration, but was our staff. You didn't think our staff had the capacity to do that? And so that's what I, and I didn't want to add another salary position to do that, so I don't know. What do you think, Brian?
So, education, I think, is great, important. I think there's a way to handle that, because there's rumors of a newsletter, right? Yes.
Yep. Those rumors are true.
Right. So, the idea is, is that everybody in the city has a water bill, so if we can put information that points to other information on the website, to say, a newsletter, then we can add that information in there as well.
And so if we're going to do that, I would say we have to have some consensus as to what that information is, what the rules are.
Truth is, I don't know what the rules are.
Right.
Those are state rules, so those are already given to us by the state, because we didn't adopt anything different.
For downtown.
Or anywhere.
Well, no, it's family-friendly in the Cove. It is. It's a totally different, no, it's designated, it really is designated differently. You don't have to have, yeah, you don't have to have it registered, you don't have to have it insured.
It's based on the vehicle.
It actually says, I'm just telling you what, there's an actual sign that says, but then when it came to downtown, we didn't just expand, we knew there you had, I'm just telling you, that's.
You're correct. We've got signs designated as a golf cart-friendly neighborhood. You're right.
It's different than a.
Are the rules different between downtown and the Cove?
Ms. McSwain is a subject matter expert on golf carts.
So the rules are not different for golf carts, okay? Low-speed vehicles are, have different rules because they follow the Florida statutes, but golf carts.
Well, there's a difference between golf carts, is what you're saying, and low speed.
Well, a golf cart can be a low-speed vehicle, it just has to be equipped as a low-speed vehicle, but there, but there's no difference for, in different neighborhoods of what golf cart requirements are.
Well, the Cove thinks so.
They're all.
No, but listen, okay, so you said low-speed, my golf cart only goes 20 miles an hour, so I'm not a low-speed vehicle. I do not have, I do not have to have the certain things you have to have on a low-speed vehicle. There is a difference.
That is correct. Okay, so a low-speed vehicle can actually travel on roadways under, I believe it's 35 miles per hour, but they cannot travel on state roads. The golf carts under ordinance are required to be equipped with efficient brakes, reliable steering apparatus, safe tires, a rearview mirror, and red reflectorized warning devices on the front and rear. It also says that in our ordinance that all operators of a golf cart on designated city streets shall be in possession of a valid driver's license, so you do have to have a driver's license.
So what about seatbelts? What about insurance?
There's no seatbelt requirement, there's no, there's no insurance requirement.
So it's the low-speed versus golf cart? So in the Cove, when they say golf cart-friendly, it's not low-speed vehicle, it's golf carts that just go under 20 miles an hour.
That's anywhere in here, anywhere on the.
Anywhere of the colored section on the map.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, anywhere that.
And 3 is not even shown very much on this map, because, you know, it's, we're further up north.
Makes me happy, but.
Jerome, can you scroll it down for Commissioner?
I thought if it went more than 20 miles an hour, it was a low-speed vehicle, or is it 22 miles, somewhere is in there, even if it's a golf cart, it becomes, it follows the rules of low-speed vehicles.
So, yes, even a golf cart can be a low-speed vehicle. For example, the city attorney drives a golf cart, which is actually a low-speed vehicle because he does have the requirements of a low-speed vehicle. The difference is that golf carts, which do not meet all the requirements of a low-speed vehicle and can't go generally as fast, they can only travel on designated city roadways that the city has designated by ordinance. But low-speed vehicles may travel on any roadway that is under 35 miles per hour, and that is not a state road.
So what's a street legal, low-speed?
Low-speed vehicle.
Are they the same?
They can be the same. That's the difference is, I mean, you would have to know when you purchase your golf cart, if it's a low-speed vehicle, if it meets all the requirements to go on a roadway under 35 miles per hour, or if it's just a typical golf cart that is on.
So our information campaign needs to be more than just a mention in the newsletter.
Well, what I'm saying, though, is that that information can be presented to all citizens through that method, that was my point. Instead of creating a registration system, we can create a very robust education system that we point all citizens to.
Well, and I'd like to add to that, though, that if we, how do the police know the difference unless they're clocking how fast, you know what I'm saying? That's the only difference between a low-speed and a golf cart. I just feel like there's some, a lot of gray lines here. So when people have a regular golf cart and get pulled over by the police for not having a seatbelt, that doesn't, that's really not the same thing as the low, that's what I was trying to say.
Why I hadn't brought it back up, even though I'm in support of a registration process, is because there is no consensus.
There's certainly no consensus. That's an understatement.
I think the consensus that I've heard is that there needs to be more education.
Yes. That's the consensus I've heard.
So that's what I'm saying, is that I think the staff should create, I mean, I think Kristin could put together a video, you know.
She did make a post.
And put it out there. But I think that it needs to be distributed to all the citizens, and I think the water bill is a great way to do that.
If I can just ask just feedback from all five of you. So I know when we, when y'all made these changes back in the summer, you know, I think we admit, there was a learning process for staff as well. Chief Smith acknowledged that. And I know initially that happened, but, you know, after 60 or 90 days, the consensus I've heard is that, you know, everyone, you know, we kind of all figured it out as a family of Panama Cityans. And so my question is, in the last 60 days, are you continuing to hear lots of examples of people getting pulled over by the police? So, yeah, so I don't, I acknowledge it was a problem kind of right out of the gate, but I think, I think it's not really a problem anymore.
But I would like to expand this.
Oh, oh, not.
Well, we did discuss expanding it.
We did, yeah.
And may I, may I explain the reason why we haven't expanded it yet? Is because a lot of your areas that you want to expand it to cross over state roads, and so we were looking at, we have to work with the state and give, and get data and feedback on what is a safe crossing point of a state road. So we were gonna, for example, we were going to include more of, above the St. Andrews area, we were going to include some of the Frankfurt Avenue, where it says specifically Frankfurt Avenue on your map, but the reason we didn't include some of those neighborhoods is because we have been working with FDOT for a safe crossing of Highway 98, and we have not met that criteria yet. So there can be more golf cart-friendly neighborhoods, it's just that you can't cross state roads unless FDOT allows us to.
Well, there's no state roads in Liberty.
Right, and that's correct. We can still do those roads, but some of these areas.
There's no state roads in Candlewick.
And there was specific reference to Millville north of Business 98, and Ms. Bryant requested the Glenwood community as well.
And those are in the works.
The distinction with Business 98 would be that it couldn't be crossed.
That's correct.
But we could make the neighborhood with that distinction, you know, and then it would go back to whether it's street legal or low, low speed, as to whether it could cross the street.
So could we do like a friendly video that we could all share? We could share on the website, we could share on, we could put the link on the, on the water bill for more information, or if you want a print address, email Jan 1,000 emails to ask for, but just something to clarify, and I think what we need clarified is what's required for the low.
Low-speed vehicles, they do require.
And what's the difference between the two of them, and which ones are allowed? Like, okay, anyway, you get the point.
Yeah, yeah, I've got all that. I can, I can give you the definition of both, I pulled it up for you while we're sitting here.
I know you can, but.
Do you want to hear that?
We need it outside of lawyer's speed, we need it like we're, you know.
Plain, plain language, plain language, it's a golf cart.
We're good.
That's under 20 miles, and low speed is a, is a four-wheeled vehicle that can, top speed can go over 20, but not greater than 25 miles, and low-speed vehicles do have to be registered and insured.
There's really no such thing as a street-legal golf cart, to my understanding. You're either a golf cart, or you're a low-speed vehicle.
That's correct.
That's right.
But that's getting into attorney talk.
They sell kits that you can, if you buy like a club car that doesn't, it's just off a golf course kind of situation, they sell kits that you can actually upgrade them and take them to the DMV, get it.
Right, to a low-speed vehicle, right.
And turn it into a low-speed.
Sure, yeah. Yes, you can.
Then you're required to pay insurance, and you do all that, and so people don't want to, don't want to have to do that, but, I mean, whatever, it just, I think education, let's start with the education piece.
Yeah, education. So is that a motion?
I think we can just tell them.
Need a motion? I think we already, no, we already have something on the website that Kristin has put on there about.
Yeah, we have all of that.
I mean, it's already on there.
Yeah, it's already on there.
And nobody's looking at it, so I don't expect, I don't expect anybody to get very educated.
Yeah. We've talked about, we've talked about doing some more videos to educate things, and we'll absolutely, this is on the list, we will expedite it.
And then can you give me a timeline as to these other areas, when they, they could be added?
I think we're waiting on FDOT as part of the challenge, but at least, maybe not all of them, but some of them, so.
Off over the road.
It's hard to speak for FDOT.
Okay, so there's no interest in a sticker registration for them?
Well, I'll say I'm interested, but I think.
I'm interested.
I think you and I are alone in that one.
Yeah, I'm not.
Wait a second. We haven't asked the ladies down here.
I don't mind the registration, but let's try the education piece first, and then let those guys work on how much staff it would take, and give us a kind of a, you know, what if it, what their opinion is.
Let me put it this way.
Cut money out of the budget.
I will, I will drop my support for a sticker if somebody has to go hire somebody to manage a sticker. I'm not, like, that piece is not something that I'm in support of. So if, like, we can do it without creating some bunch of complications, absolutely, I'm supportive of a sticker, but.
I would think for a $5 call, you know, if we paid $5 for the sticker, we could make it pay for itself, and we could do it all over the internet, so it wouldn't be that big a deal. But anyway, that's just, that's my thought, so.
That would have to be done in an enterprise fund, wouldn't it?
No.
No?
No.
We should, we should create a new enterprise fund for it.
All right. Then you need another accountant?
All right, so.
Boy, you need an accountant? Yes.
So there's interest in registration, but not interest enough to make a motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think, I think staff has direction on this.
I think education first, and then if that doesn't work, then, I mean, I guess we'll be maybe we'll build.
Right now, everything's working just fine, really, but.
Do we measure success when nobody gets killed?
Heck, yeah.
Because if, if somebody gets hit on one of these things, somebody's going to die or get busted up pretty bad.
I think, I think if we go to registration process, the Gulf Breeze one is a good example of one, you know, however, I'm not trying to force everybody into a spot, and I understand trying to keep things simple, like, and so, you know, seems like there's consensus around education, everybody believes that's important, so let's, let's put some more education out there and give it to the team to expedite it.
Just so I have clarity for my area. Okay, so the golf cart-friendly allowed low, non-low-speed.
Golf carts.
Regular golf carts, didn't have to have the regulations to drive in the Cove and the south side of Millville. Then what we did, and to go downtown, before that, you had to have a low-speed vehicle that was insured, that had all the signals and the, all the things that's required, right? But then after we voted on extending, so are you telling me that low-speed, of course, was already welcome there because they can do that over the state, but now we've gone up to where if it's just a regular golf cart, they do not have to have those same standards?
That's, that's correct. So any street that's designated golf cart-friendly.
I've been nervous every time.
Yes, they, they can drive a golf cart on those designated streets.
You hold it to Brian.
So all of the areas that are highlighted.
So the Cove can drive to downtown, I think is what you're saying.
That is correct. Yes, because the Cove and the downtown areas connect.
Okay.
Does that matter if you have low speed or that? And I needed that clarification for the people that live in the Cove, for sure, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Have it on record.
All right. All right, moving on 10D. This is the city giving five parking spots to the shrimp boat owners, it's five parking spots on Bay Avenue, and the idea was to exchange it for some parking in the front of the shrimp boat. I think that the business-like way of approaching this thing would be that we would have a contract worked out with the parking, and after that contract was worked out, then we would allow them to put the air conditioning on the road, because they have taken up spaces there. But what has happened is we have allowed them to put the air conditioning on the road, and we still haven't got, we haven't figured out how much parking they're going to give us, and my concern is that we're not approaching this in a business-like fashion. Would anyone like to talk about it?
What exactly is the lease? I mean, I know what you're talking about.
What lease?
What's the terms of the lease right now?
What lease? There's no lease.
Oh, they're not leasing that space from us?
No, we gave it to them.
Let me explain for my presentation.
We swapped it for many additional spaces in front of the shrimp boat.
But we have not made a con, that's my point, is that we have not made a contract for the additional spaces. We, we don't have the additional spaces. So they got something, but we got nothing.
So our word, go ahead, make sure we all got the right.
So the week, two weeks ago, I think it was now.
Yep, we had a meeting.
At this point in time, so Jonathan invited me to come meet with the owner who came into town. And we had a, we had a discussion of they acknowledge what was promised. They are not willing at this point in time to do what they promised. And so we walked away with that meeting with, you can either make us a, you can make it right, or we will, you're going to have to move your stuff, which they acknowledged. They acknowledged in that that they would. I think what would be helpful to Jonathan in the, in this instance is for us to create, what are, what are, what are three parking spaces? I think it's three or four parking spaces. I don't think it's quite five, but it is, it is that, what is that worth? And create what, what directive do we see that as a value? Is it $10,000, is it $15,000? So that there's some kind of parameters of understanding of what that would be. Now, that's what the owner said. Now, whether that's what the owner follows through with when they realize that's a big expense to have to go and move their, move their, their ACs is another thing, but.
They don't want to share those spots with the city?
There was a, there was a concern of they are working through a sale on the piece of property, and they didn't want to sell it with a restriction on it to public parking. And, you know, I mean, to, I think the only mistake here is believing people will actually honor their word. I think that's really truthfully what the biggest mistake is. And I don't necessarily, you know, there was never a reason to believe that, that this specific group was not going to honor what they said. And it was an emergency situation that took action, because there was a business that was, had no AC, and they were getting moved out.
If I bend over backwards for my downtown businesses, I would do anything.
Well, listen, the problem here was that we did not have a written agreement, and they've backed out of it, is what that's happening.
I would, I would beg to differ on the written agreement, because they do have email exchanges and things like that that are in writing.
So we had a written agreement?
So there is a, not a formalized lease, but there is definitely a documented understanding of what was supposed to happen. And, and so it is, it is a renegotiation of that. And as far as I'm concerned, if you don't honor what you say you're going to do, like, that's on you, that's not on me. And, and so we'll see what they end up doing. I think they've got about maybe a week or two to come back to us with something. One of the things that they suggested is like, well, maybe we can't give you these spaces, but we're going to tear down these two old buildings that are right over by Little Village, and we'll give you those spaces. And so I don't know where it's going to land, but I think the reality of it is that, just like you said, Jenna, you try to do everything you can to support business, to support growth in your community, to do what's right, and not be a difficult government to work with. And then people don't follow through with their word. And that, I don't think that's on Jonathan, I really just don't. So, I mean, I think that's on the individuals that made the promises, and so.
So if I understand what you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Lucas.
If I understand what you just said, they think having a restrictive to the city of Panama City would preclude them from being able, or lessen the value of what they could get for the property and so forth.
That, that's.
But if they don't have air conditioning, they, they can.
I'm saying.
It's a, it's. Have it if they sold the building.
Yeah.
It would be the new owner that would have the problem.
I know, but we're saying that, that we'll just get rid of their air conditioning.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, that was clearly communicated.
Can we, can we direct them to, attorney, can we direct them to disconnect the air conditioning?
Right now, it's not fully connected.
And give us back the parking spaces?
Jonathan has told me all along, if they don't live up to the agreement, that he's going to go over there with a forklift and pull up the air conditioning.
A bulldozer.
And I'd say, oh, the bulldozer. I'd say we're, you're way overdue, Jonathan. You need to quit putzing around here. And instead of worrying about business, you need to worry about the residents of Panama City, because we're getting cheated out of parking spots over there. And it is close to five parking spots. I've gone over there with a ruler and a car, and I've measured them off. They block Bayview. It's an eyesore what they have over there. I think all of us would recommend that. So it's not our job to bail out private, private business. These people, there's about 10 of them that own this thing. They own about something like five hotels on the water on Panama City Beach. So these are not poor people. They're, they're playing us for suckers, as far as I got.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're playing for suckers. I think at this point in time, like, it's been communicated, it is understood that if you don't come back with an agreement on parking spaces, that your air conditioners are getting removed.
Good.
So I, I think that was clearly communicated in that meeting. And, and it was understood, because it was repeated back, so.
And I just think we could rubber stamp that understanding with a letter from our attorney.
I would agree with that. And I think that we need to put a date that they have to, I mean, it's not like just an open-ended. We need to know by X date.
What I do think would be good, you know, just from Jonathan's perspective, because I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but like, we, we have dumpsters on public property. We have all, in these downtown areas, most of these buildings are built to zero lot line. So you have to have some utility sharing that's in the public right of way and public property for things to work. You can't build edge to edge and then put an AC out there. So the, these, where there is a private piece, in, in downtown specifically, a private business's equipment or a building's equipment, I mean, there's probably 100 or 200 locations that have that. So I think what would be good for Jonathan, you know, moving forward and for us to create clarity is, what do we value a parking space at? And, and, and have some things. If somebody's got something to that, I mean, I've got my ideas, but, you know, I mean, if you've got another one, I mean, I think a parking space specifically in St. Andrews is worth 25K. That's me.
Okay, well, so you're going to have a little bit of challenge, Josh, because like, in downtowns where the businesses are, let's go back to Greenville again, where the businesses don't have their dedicated parking, they pay into the city for parking, but it's not to have one or four spots all to yourself, right? You're still, you're putting into a pot, so all the businesses are still sharing. In their case, it's not. So I loved, I love the idea, and I thought it was a brilliant idea to swap out those spots. To have 50 open spots for the city, I mean, that's a no-brainer. So I'm just very disappointed to hear this.
I would agree with just what you're saying. I apologize.
That's all right.
Fire away.
I was just going to say, I think the issue at this point isn't parking now. It's, we entered an agreement, and they've flat-sticked to your faces, they're not going to honor it.
They've reneged.
Yeah.
These people, they should have put the air conditioning in the roof. They didn't need to put it out on the road.
I will say this, to be fair in the agreement, because like, I'd be fair in the conversation, they were apologetic somewhat in that communication of that, with the explanation of we can't hinder the property for a potential future sale. But again, that's not our issue to solve. Like, I, like, I have a rule. Like, if you tell them you're going to do something, you're going to, you're going to do it. I mean, like, that, I don't, I don't, like, I just don't work that way. And, and so, you know, it's an honor of commitment. I, I like the idea of let's go ahead and issue a letter of just saying, hey, look, this needs to be resolved by such and such a date. I think, you know, two weeks is, is a good point. And we'll either have an agreement, or we'll be moving in a direction to remove what's there.
We need to look at that agreement and make sure that it works for us.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, we, we can't be, we can't be giving city stuff away.
No, I mean, I think the agreement is exactly what Jenna said.
Yeah, what she said is great.
Was, was you take these couple of spaces and you open up your lot for public parking. That was very clear, and it was acknowledged in that meeting.
If we got the parking, a commensurate amount of parking, yes, that, that would have been a good deal. And what they're reneging on is because they want to sell it and make extra money. I mean, it's, it's all about money.
But again, that's our issue to solve, and I don't, and I don't fault Jonathan for that. When someone else doesn't own their, their, their word, that's, that's on them, not on him, and so.
Well, we're a big business, the word ain't good enough. It's got to be.
Well, and I think we've got a path direct by that.
We have the, the position, we have the high ground on this one. I mean, we honestly do. Like, we can, tomorrow, if we were to vote tonight, tomorrow, we, not, I'm not suggesting this, but we could literally remove their AC units tomorrow. And then anybody who's looking to purchase the building would, would go, where's the AC units, right? So my, my point is, is that we are in the position, we're in the better position here by far, by far.
Yeah, the lease agreement is for them, it's not for us.
Exactly.
The only thing that we, we need the benefit to is access to the parking. And that is what is right now, is what's preventing an agreement from coming, and so.
I see them as being in the driver's seat right now. They haven't done anything. They've gotten everything, haven't done anything.
It's more like the ball's in their court.
Yeah, that's true. It's in their court.
They've spent about half a million dollars on ACs at this point in time that are sitting in spaces they don't control the land for. So I, I think that, I think Commissioner Granger is correct. The city is not, like, although it is not a solid, it is not, it's not settled. It, it, it will be settled. And so, do we need to make a motion on that? I mean, Janice, you, you brought it up, so like, do you want to make a motion on issuing a letter?
Second, your motion.
Okay.
Me?
Issue a letter with a two-week notification on behalf of the city from the city attorney, so.
Second.
Okay, so we're, so they're going to get a letter that says they got to do something? Is that, is that what the letter's going to?
They have to bring us back an agreement, or, or else.
Within two weeks.
So it's got to be an agreement. It's got to be an agreement that's good for us.
Well, we'll be.
Okay, they're not going to give us a parking spot out there and say, you guys can have a parking.
No, I mean, I, I mean, they.
I don't trust these guys.
They did offer, they did offer three parking spaces, but that was, that was rejected very clearly.
It's pretty close to five.
Even if it's five spaces, they, five spaces wouldn't have been an even exchange.
No, not at all, not at all, for sure. Did you get the motion, Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah.
Great, we didn't have a, we didn't call the roll.
Yeah, well, before we do, I'd just like to clarify one thing. And that is, Mr. Hughes is representing the city on this issue. And so he has been constantly working with Mr. Jones, Mr. Hayes. He prepared the lease agreement, he prepared, we, he talked about doing an easement. So he's been involved. I mean, the lease agreement has, has gone back and forth, but then it was never accepted. And the reason that Mr. Hughes is involved is this is the second time in 11 years that we actually, my firm has a conflict. We do not represent this client on this issue, but we do represent the client on issues in Panama City Beach. So, Mr. Hughes, I am certain will be pleased to.
To do this.
To do this on behalf of you, on behalf of the city. But I did want to just make you aware of that. You have excellent representation with Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Are we paying him?
Yes.
Well, so we are, we are, we have a, we have a dog in this fight, so to speak. And I don't, they're not playing fair, but anyway. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Uh, no.
Motion passes 4 to 1.
Okay, city manager, Jonathan?
All right, item 11A is consideration to execute and sell a perpetual easement for the cell tower, BRA 374, site name 340, desk 115C, in the amount of $742,000 to Tower Point. As background information, an unsolicited offer from Crown Castle was provided to the city on February 15th of 2024 to lease or purchase the Bell South Cell Tower located behind the Beckin 19th Underground Utilities Facility and Fire Station Number 2. A second unsolicited offer was later received from Tower Point. At the October 8th City Commission Meeting of 2024, approval was given for the city manager to sell the easement. The final and best offers received from each were submitted to the city, with Crown Castle offering $735,000 and Tower Point offering $742,000. Staff recommendation through the logistics director is that the commission accept the offer in the amount of $742,000 for the sale of the perpetual easement to Tower Point. And I will just note also, from the October, October 8th City Commission Meeting, as, as the approved by the commission, the, the funds from this are to be used for parking improvements in and around downtown St. Andrews. And I do believe that Mr. Zimmerman has some additional information for the commission to consider prior to deliberation on what would happen if Tower Point did potentially sell this or closed the lot, what that might happen to us. Mr. Zimmerman?
I'm a little bit lost.
What would happen if they were to either like, shut the lot down or, or walk away from it or anything like that? What would happen to the property?
Well, under the lease and under the, under, under the existing lease and under the permanent lease, if that is no longer being used for the purpose of a cell tower, then the property would revert back to the city.
And we have an easement to get in and out of there, no matter what happens?
Yeah. They have, under this new proposal, the city still owns the property. They have a perpetual easement. I don't know of any reason why the city would need to get on there, but it would.
Well, we do use the road to come around the east side of that storm pond, so, yes.
So, yes.
So not the actual cell tower footprint, but leading up to it and around it for the storm pond management.
Okay, is there a motion to go ahead and ask the city, accept the offer and take $742,000 for the cell tower?
I'll motion to approve with the understanding of the restrictions to parking for public purpose in St. Andrews improvements.
Second.
All right, Ms., any further discussion?
I, I'll just add, I want to give kudos to Mr. Sean Self for moving this initially. The offer was 601, or maybe 605, and he got it all the way up to 742, so.
So I, I love this, because it's taking something that really doesn't have a public purpose at all, and now we're going to be able to make something with a public purpose. And so that's, I think that's awesome.
I wonder if Mr. Self could do the negotiations on that shrimp boat parking over there?
I think we'll end up just fine on that one at the end, but.
Ms. Smith, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Halagus? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Commissioner Granger? It's up to you, we're done.
No, no, we have, we have, we have two more items, Mr. Mayor. Item 11B is requested feedback on the strategic priorities workshop format options. During the regular city commission meeting on January 14th of 2025, the commission discussed the format of the already scheduled strategic priorities and planning workshop for February 20th of 2025. Several ideas were discussed, and ultimately, the city commission asked staff to bring back some options at the following meeting. Below are the three options for your consideration. Option 1, proceed as planned and noticed with the strategic parties and planning workshop on February 20th, 2025, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Bay County Government Center. The workshop could be facilitated, facilitated by the commission and staff or by a third party. Option 2, proceed as scheduled on February 20th, 2025, but with an FDOT-style open house workshop. The city commission could solicit input from constituents using personal interaction, more one-on-one, and comment cards, and then bring that feedback, once gathered and organized, to a workshop sometime in March, either facilitated by the commission and staff or by a third party. Option 3, commissioners hold individual town halls or socials in their respective wards with the mayor during the month of February. Keep in mind, CRE socials are already planned and scheduled for February 6th, 11th, 13th, and 27th, although we do need to reschedule the one on the 27th. The input received could then be considered at a collective workshop in March, facilitated by the commission and staff or a third party. Please note that staff has received a quote, as requested by the commission, from a vendor that would be interested in facilitating, facilitating a three-hour workshop for the city commission in the amount of $2,000 plus or minus. Staff is receptive to any of the options above and is looking forward to incorporating the feedback from a workshop into the fiscal year 2026 budget preparation process. Mr. Mayor?
All right, well, thank you. Looks like we have three options. Would anyone like to discuss them?
Yeah, so I originally pushed this forward because I, I like option 2. It's the one that, that allows us to receive input from all the different wards from the city at large, walking through. It also allows us an opportunity to educate a lot of the citizens on what services that the city offers. I actually think that we should rename this from being the Strategic Priorities Workshop to a, the Services Priorities Workshop, because that was my original intent in bringing this to this board, was to rack and stack which services that we provide to the citizenry. And so just inherently discussing just the services that the city provides carves out all of the projects and everything else that we're doing from Hurricane Michael. All of that stuff continues on, we don't even have to discuss it. It's, it's more of just the, the city normal services that we provide and where we should rack and stack our focus on those going into 2026.
So I got, I got to spend some time, and I think, Brian, like, you, you brought up service-based budgeting last year in the budget process, so I've gotten to spend some time looking at Pensacolos, the way that they do it, really diving into it. It is a, it is a clear presentation of the city budget, quite substantially. So I've been staying informed with the, with Samantha and Brandy and Jonathan as we've been moving forward with their transition, trying to get to that. I don't think that, from what I understand from them, they're quite there yet. So I guess my question is, and this is a question like, what do we do if the service-based modeling isn't ready for the meeting on the 20th? Because, you know, it, it is a substantial change to go from the very standardized, complex municipal budgeting model to a service-based model that clearly communicates, this is what you're spending on fire, this is what you're sitting on police, this is what you're spending on parks, this is what you're spending on, like, that has a clear, this is what it takes to deliver these services. So I guess, you know, my only, I guess my only concern with trying to push a service-based model is if we haven't adopted a service-based budget before, we're kind of just, we're kind of just throwing it out there. I don't even know what to expect.
So I think that's, that's, that's really, really good question. And it sounds like in your question that, that, that there's, there's probably, we're talking about dollars in this discussion, and that would link back to the service delivery budget. And what I'm presenting here, what I'm asking us to do is to not have dollars tied into this. To not say, well, how much money should we give the fire department? That's not the question that I want to ask the public. That's not the question that I want to ask the public. What I want to ask the public is, here's all the services that we offer, which ones matter more to you? Knowing that when it comes time to allocate funds, that, how we rack and stack is how those funds are going to get allocated. But we're not talking about the specifics of it. We're not going down the rabbit holes of, of how this or how that. It's just more of figuring out what does the public want out of their city from a very, very high level. Now, dovetailing that in, once we do get to a service delivery budget, then it'll be much, much easier. But looking at this on the front end, it's going to take a couple of years of, of doing this to get the city, to get the citizens of the city in the mindset of, hey, this is the, the process by which we can control the city. Go to the meeting in February, March, whenever we have it. Go to that meeting, the outputs of that influence the budget. The budget then gets set, and then next year, that's what we got.
And I understand the process. I like the approach. However, what it brought up for me, as you were just describing it, was that process we went through after Hurricane Michael, where those of us in the performing arts community met in a series of meetings to dream big and to create, you know, what we wanted in a premier performing arts center. And we did a lot of research. We did all that. But in the end, it was for naught because we didn't have the money. So, the, the question, you have to ask the right question to get what you want. If you ask me what my preference is, and I say, oh, I prefer that we take care of the fire department primarily, you know, I rank them, but then you say, what do you need? Then the way I answer that question may be very different than what I prefer. And so, I think we have to be, we have to carefully craft the questions so that when the, we do talk numbers, it doesn't seem as though we ask questions on the right but did something on the left.
So, I, I like what you're, what you're saying, Janice, because I think in a, in a perfect world scenario, and using the Hurricane Michael experience is a good one, like, right now, we operate in a, in a deficit. And so, if we weren't operating in a deficit, then yes, you can just look at it and saying, hey, there's no, there's no, like, you can pick and choose, and we can prioritize from that. But, you know, what we're really asking going through this budgetary process now is, you know, and granted, we won't have revenue projections, we won't have those things, but like, we should at least be able to look at the budget that we've already approved for this year and, and balance that without using reserves. And I, I think that's, that's the first step to getting to a balanced approach. And that's not necessarily the citizens' job to go through every line by line. That's what they're expecting us to do. And then from that baseline, I think it makes perfect sense to give, okay, prioritize from this. But if I tell somebody, if I tell somebody, here, here's a budget, you're already taking out of reserves and funding your operational expenses, so you got to start with a cut. I mean, that's not, I think, I think there's a better way to do that without, without one, putting our staff through that, as well as the general public to, to try to go through line by line and understand what can be cut and what can't. Because Jan made a good point last time. There's some of this stuff that's just forced by regulations. Like, it's actually like, we can't do anything about it, like.
Who's asking for the citizens to go through line by line?
Okay, yeah, let me just, I'm going to add, I think that.
I think it's two.
I don't know if we're all thinking the same thing. So, for me, I'm dead on with what he's saying. And the reason I'm saying that is because I'm thinking simple.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about making things complicated. Now that we know the projects, we have all these infrastructure projects, we have MLK, we've got the Martin, we've got all this, we're negotiating with slips at the marinas, we've got all that, so we all know everybody wants that, we're doing that. This is not about budget to me.
General fund.
Right now, it's, how are we, I want to know, our citizens, for the most part, feel very underserved in the sense of how we service them. So, when you talk about services, I want to know, I think this is what you're saying. I want to know at this point, just for this year, I want to know, like, no offense, Jan, but I want to know, like, you know, people are like, I really don't like the experience I have when I go to the water department, you know? I really want, I want to know how their services, I want to know the, the community relationships. I want to know the thing, and that doesn't cost anything to say, okay, we're going to make it a priority to do, you know, to do. Now, maybe there is some funding that would be responsible for that, you know? Maybe there's some leadership training, or maybe there's whatever. But that would be something we'd have to discuss whether we could do it or not. Or let's say it's, you know, when I call, when I call and, you know, nobody answers the phone in public works. Once again, I'm not trying to make, I'm just saying, you know? I try to call and no one, but what is the real problem there? Is that really a problem? I mean, Jonathan, I cannot decide if that's a real problem or not. But we, I hear it, you know? So, if that's what the citizens are saying, then we're missing something. So, I want to know how people are treated. That's what my concern for this priority, this strategic, how can we make our citizens have a better relationship with us? How can we help each other? So, to me, it's not about budgeting and having to go through line item stuff. Or let's say it's the parks, and they're like, listen, I really want the city to, you know, I want, everybody desires all the parks to be clean and have no litter, not that they do, but let's just say that was something that came out of it, or it was one park that, and maybe it's Henry Davis Park or something, we know, okay, well, that's a priority, but that's just a matter of priorities, you know, of like, what we're going to make sure, maybe we, maybe then Keith will have to make a decision of how he's doing maintenance and what he might have to give up and not do maintenance on that maybe people don't care about as much. That's kind of what I was thinking that we would be doing. And that's why I like the idea of two, because somebody comes in, and I do like the idea of hearing from Janice's ward and your ward and all that, and putting in those comments of service. I do agree with you, we need to have specific questions. This isn't like, do you want a playground? You know what I mean? This is, we need to have specific questions about all of our department, on ways that we could improve and/or what, what the complaints are, and see if we can have solutions to have a better, healthier city for the citizens. That's kind of more what I was thinking.
My question is, where do we talk about, like, what, what reserve allocation should look like? Where do we talk about the actual practice?
But that's not something we ask them.
Yeah, that's not something.
We'll have another meeting after this.
Well, that's what option two is.
Option two is two different meetings.
Yes. Option two is having where we have all the citizen input on specific questions about services, how we can do better to improve as a city. And then the second one, we can add in those line items or.
I like the feedback piece. I like, I like the FDOT style because what it does provide is it's not just people in the meeting that, that get to speak to it. You have a 10-day open comment period that, you know, any citizen that couldn't come that night can watch the video, can, can listen to that. I really like that. I think, I think what I guess, and maybe I'm just trying to cut to the chase, like, at, at some point in time, you've got to talk about numbers, and I don't want to, what I don't want to have happen is, you know, the citizens give us all these dreams, and then we come in March and we're like, hey, guys, we don't have any money. And I think that's what Janice is concerned with.
I'm just talking about services.
Yeah.
I'm even saying with services, like, like.
Well, then we'd have to think about that in the second meeting. We'd have to be like, okay, then we'd have to, between that first meeting and the second meeting, when they get the comments, they would have to go to the table and say, wow, what are some solutions for these things? Some things aren't going to cost anything, some things are. I mean, maybe there's something internally that, you know, we can do with our customer service, I mean, I'm just making this up, but, you know, maybe there's a, you know, internal competition with, you know, how many great comments you get back. Maybe we at the, at the desk, when they come to pay their water bill, that we're like, hey, do you mind filling out this comment card and telling us how we can improve? I mean, everything doesn't cost money.
Tell me how I did. I mean, that's, there's some companies that put that at the bottom of their emails. I mean, like.
Yeah, so, I mean, just things like that.
This is not, in my opinion, something that we are soliciting input for very, very specific things, nor is it solicitation for, hey, how much money should we spend on these things? It's, we're going to have a set amount of money that we're going to all agree on, that we're going to spend next, you know, in 2026, right? And so, all I'm trying to do is look for what, what.
What's important to the people.
What's important to the people. And when we get into those discussions about the real dollars and about the, hey, this is what needs to not be here, this is maybe there needs to be less, or maybe this needs to be more, is then I can look, we can, as a group, look at that and go, hey, we heard from our, from everybody that came, that these are the major issues, maybe we should actually fund those more or throw some money at it.
So, what, so, could we add this to the very first meeting? I think this will accomplish the concerns. There needs to be a real expectation. So, the expectation that everything just stays status quo going into next year, like, that's not realistic. Like, we've seen the projections, we know what's going on, and yes, they've improved, but they're still, they're still too tight. We don't have enough to just continue. And, and we're specifically talking about general fund. I'm not talking about where most of our employees are in water and sewer and like, and those kinds of things. I'm talking about the general fund piece. If we don't create some type, what I would love to have is the feedback of what is most important based upon our citizens. But I think, I think there's some aspects that we know people want their potholes fixed, that they want, like, they want their, I mean, there's those things to it. At some point in time, you've got it, you've got to set a realist expectation. I don't know how to do that, but I'm not so sure that, just starting with a public workshop, there's got to be some, how do you set an expectation at your open house of like, this is what, this is what our objective here is today, like?
The facilitator does that.
Yeah.
And I liked.
It's too bad we don't have a bunch of citizens advisory councils. We could ask them. Yeah. Yeah, then we would.
Maybe that's come, maybe that comes out of it.
They may come out of it. I mean, like Lynn Hayden did a, a debt, like, like a, a debt evaluation, citizen advisory committee for two years. They did that. There may be something that comes out of this, but I think, I think right now, where, I mean, where we are is just like such a sensitive point. You know, we've got two more years worth of runway that we got to get through, and that means like, there's a different, there's a different perspective in that two years than there is two years after that.
Well, I think, I think I'm hearing your concerns here that, that, and some of the other concerns that were expressed is that there's, there's kind of this worry that if we get into something like this, that we're going to put out an expectation, or there's going to, the citizens are going to leave with an expectation of that we're going to do their favorite thing, or we're going to do whatever it is that comes out of this. And the whole point behind all this is to just rack and stack services. There obviously needs to be a little bit of an educational piece on the front end of that. We can also take in comment cards on, hey, how are we doing in these specific areas? But then I think that to, to answer kind of your, your concerns of, hey, we actually have to like, put the nose to the grindstone and deal with, like, deal with the numbers, right? That's not the meeting for that. That, the first meeting is not for that, right? We would be there for, for eight hours, right? So, so, that's, that's our job, is to, to figure the, the numbers piece out and, you know, work with staff to come up with a, with a solution.
I promise, because I want to go home like everybody else.
Yeah, me too.
But I'm just going to try to use another example of what I would expect, okay? So, Brenda has mentioned before that on her side and her neighborhood, that we don't have anywhere for the kids to play, right? Or we don't have, now, we, somebody might complain about that. Now, it doesn't mean we're going to be able to go out and buy a playground, but what it, what it would tell Keith is like, I need to do some programming. I need to find a spot out there to do some programming and allow, so it's not really about money as much as it's like, all the directors will also know kind of, hey, this is what, this is what the needs are, and maybe it won't be the need the next year because there will be a playground, you know, at Joe Moody or whatever. So, I think it's just, let's just get feedback, you know, some basic, you know, we can give some expectations, a, a facilitator could say, hey, look, we're not, we already know you need your potholes, we already know those kind of things, but like, what, what, you know, what is it you think you're lacking in your area? And there might be a way just to do things where, then these directors are, are smart, and they can be like, okay, like, the, the mayor's mentioned the fire hydrants, you know? Maybe in the, in the, the chief's budget, he decides not to go for something else and focus on the fire hydrants because we had 100 people tell us that they were concerned about that, you know? So, I don't think, it just might be a reallocation to help the city staff know what to focus on.
That, that's that, that, that's what I'm looking for. Because when we get into the numbers and we start talking about, well, this should be there, this shouldn't be there, then it, if, it's going to be difficult to make that decision and say, okay, well, we need to cut here, we need to cut there, but if we've had this feedback from the citizenry, then it's like, okay, this is in line with that. Or I understand that, that we had 15 people tell us that they want to have, you know, a swimming pool, but we can't afford one. And so, that, then that's a conversation back with the citizens and say, hey, look, we just can't afford one right now. We just can't do that. And, and then it's not.
But what are the real concerns? That you don't, that children aren't learning how to swim? Is that the case? Can we partner with the Boys and Girls Club? I mean.
But it needs to be service-based, not just, I know Parks and Rec's like the easiest one to come up with.
It is.
But, but it needs to have all of the services that the city provides.
Anyway, that's good. I, I like option two, obviously. I'd like to do that, and even if we're like, well, that wasn't worth a whole lot, I think it's going to be worth a whole lot still. So.
I don't think you're going to get a bad experience from getting feedback. I think it's just, it's another month before you get to the.
We weren't even going to do this.
Like, that was, but, I mean, I think, I think there is an aspect to this that we have to take. I think, I think, we're good, we're good. I'm good.
We do need to talk about all that at, at our workshop. We just need two, is what we're saying. We'd like to have two.
Yep.
One for feedback.
Going to make a motion that we go with the most popular one, which appears to be two?
The motion will go with option two.
I'll second.
Ms. Smith, can you call the roll? We've certainly had some discussion.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Just point of clarification. So, do you want both meetings to be the FDOT style?
No.
No.
So, which one would be the FDOT style? Which one would be the more traditional workshop?
Do you want them both facilitated by a third party?
Let me remend my, let me amend my motion.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Well, I motion that we opt for option two, with the first meeting being the FDOT style with a facilitator.
Okay.
A hired facilitator. And then the second meeting be a workshop with the Commission to discuss the numbers.
Yes, and may I ask, the $2,000 that it may cost to facilitate, is that something you can take out of your budget, Jonathan?
So, the facilitator we reached out to is not available on February 20th, so we're going to reach out to some other facilitators.
I was more wondering about where the money could come from in the.
Oh.
Because Shanda wanted to touch her part, so.
I don't have it.
So, I was going to ask him. Which department would that come out of?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to look at the budget.
We'll have to look at the budget.
Training and.
Yeah, training. We have, I feel confident that, I feel like we can find it without doing a budget amendment.
If they can't find $2,000 for this, we're going to have a real hard time finding it anymore, right?
Yeah. It, it's just, to be clear, it's not finding, it's just finding where it comes from, because we do, we do things decently and in order. Thanks.
And if I understand, the 2,000 was for the facilitator who can't be there on the 20th. So, when we reach out, we may be looking at a different.
More or less.
Yeah, more or less. Well, that's why I said 2,000 or so.
Right.
I, I put that, it wasn't in writing, but I said it.
Not to exceed. Yeah, not to exceed 100.
What's our motion now?
Oh, my gosh. All right, so the motion is to move forward with option two, with the first meeting being in February as an FDOT-style meeting with a hired facilitator, and then the second meeting being in March, where we actually discuss the outcomes from that first meeting and drill down into what numbers we want to see moving into 2026.
Very good. Is somebody second that?
I need a amend, amendment to the second.
Oh, well, he's just going to second it this time.